In this draft have also been included in the current rate studies to ensure rates are sufficient to provide adequate funding for all needed capital improvements. A listing of all the funding sources by fund can be found in the draft CIP document beginning on page thirty-three, if you're interested in more details on the various funding sources. In summary, the draft five-year plan consists of fifty-five city projects totaling approximately three hundred and thirty-one million dollars total. Of that total, over ninety-four million is for strategic initiative projects included in the twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four strategic plan. There's an additional three point four million for other new projects scheduled to begin this next upcoming fiscal year, and the remaining total is made up of new projects scheduled in the latter four years or carry-forward projects from the prior year's CIP. During the CIP budgeting process every year, an analysis is completed of the upcoming development in the city. This step is important to do annually as the development activity in the city determines certain revenue assumptions as well as future service level needs. These various assumptions are utilized in the preparation of the CIP as well as the ten-year general fund fiscal model and the two-year operating budget. On slide seven here is the current five-year development activity projection. Staff completes a thorough review of the city's planned development and estimates how many permits are likely to be issued annually. Once the analysis is completed, a conservative five-year projection of residential units and non-residential square footage is made. The current projection includes a five-year total of four hundred and fifty single-family units and four hundred and twenty-five multifamily units. This is a significant reduction activity, especially in single-family development. We are also projecting three hundred and eighty thousand square feet of commercial, office, and industrial non-residential development. Please note that both these residential and non-residential projections are based on the current information that we have available at this time, and projections will be revised annually for updated development timing and any other new projects that may come along. This fiscal year to date, the city has issued sixty-one new single-family building permits and no new multifamily permits. The budgeted amount of one hundred and seventy-five single-family permits is not expected to be met as a large number of the permits that were expected in this fiscal year were polled right before the end of the prior fiscal year. However, during our mid-year budgeting process that happened in January, the general fund development revenues were adjusted to account for this timing change. As you know, the city's CIP program is quite successful, and the city is able to complete several projects every year. At this time, I'd like to touch on a few of the program's accomplishments that have happened since last year's workshop. First, the Brentwood Berry Streets and Roads Preservation Project provided pavement rehabilitation and preventative maintenance on several arterial roadway segments throughout the city. Treatments included grind-in overlay, spot repairs, and crack sealing. It also consisted of the removal and replacement of ramps to ensure compliance with current accessibility requirements as well as new traffic signal detection and striping. The next project, one that has recently been completed, is the City Council Chamber Audio-Visual System. This project installed upgraded cameras, microphones, and other AV equipment right here in the city council chambers and provided a complete replacement and customization of the AV control system hardware and software. The Creekside Park and Garen Park Restrooms Project constructed fully operational restrooms at both Creekside and Garen Park, and as both parks contain highly utilized playground areas and are used by a variety of different programs, these additions have been well-received by the residents and other users of the park. One project that is currently in its final stages of completion is the Deer Ridge Frontage Landscaping Improvements Project. This project converted the landscaping of fourteen sites throughout the Deer Ridge neighborhood, including the Deer Ridge Entry Area from private maintenance responsibility to City of Brentwood Maintenance Responsibility, with the improvements bringing these areas into compliance with City of Brentwood standards. The final steps in the completion of this project are either currently in process or will be beginning in the upcoming weeks. Next, we have the Marsh Creek Embankment Repair. This project restored the Marsh Creek Embankments to the original slope and installed protective armoring structure to prevent further degradation of the embankments. And lastly, we have the Sunset Park Playground Replacement Project. This was completed this past year, and this project replaced the original play structures with updated fun-new play structures for children ages two through twelve. And to maintain the necessary safety standards of the park, the project also renovated the resilient safety surfacing and wood fiber in the playground areas. At this time, I would like to turn over the presentation to Jigger Shaw, Engineering Manager, who will be discussing highlights of various current and upcoming projects.
Thank you, Sonia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, as well as the council members. Today, I'm going to present to you the capital improvement program for the upcoming fiscal year. I'm going to touch on just some of the key current and upcoming projects. First, I'd like to start with the Sand Creek Road Extension Project. As you know, the Sand Creek Road Extension will connect the western terminus of the Sand Creek Road from Highway Four up to the Hydon Ranch Road in Antioch. This ultimate roadway project will construct a four-lane road starting from Highway Four up to the city, westernly city limits. Recently, the city have awarded the construction contract to Goodfellow Brothers to construct two lanes, but one on each direction, including bike lane and underground utilities. Currently, this project is on hold, as you know, since we found golden eagle nest near our project site. We are working very closely with our environmental consultant to resolve these issues, and we likely will begin construction in August of this year. If council will approve in the future the Browel Gate Development Project, then we'll work very closely with them in order to construct the rest of the two lanes to make an ultimately four-lane road. And this project will definitely provide an alternative path of travel to some of the upcoming developments such as Costco and Innovation Center. The next project is called the Brentwood Boulevard Widening North Phase One Project. Last year, we applied for a grant for this project, but unfortunately, we were not qualified. Thus, the revised budget for this project is now three point five million dollars. The scope for this revised budget will include undergrounding some of the existing utilities just south of Nancy Street along Brentwood Boulevard and demolishing an existing Los Mexicanos market. If additional fundings are available for the city, then the city staff would like to widen this Brentwood Boulevard to four-lane road starting just north of Marsh Creek up to Sunset Street. The Lone Tree Way roadway from O'Hare Avenue up to Tilton Road is a two-lane road. As you know, Brentwood Unified School District is proposing an elementary school off Smith Road. That will add more traffic congestion to our existing limited Lone Tree Way. Thus, the Lone Tree Way roadway improvement project will widen to a four-lane road starting from O'Hare Avenue up to Tilton Road. It will also improve existing Smith Road and O'Hare Lane as well as it will install a new traffic signal right at the intersection of Lone Tree Way and Smith Road. Currently, our staff is working fairly closely with the school district in order to finalize the improvements on Smith Road. The project also requires a right-of-way acquisition, which we are in the process of. The total project cost is approximately sixteen million dollars, and it is anticipated to complete by end of twenty-twenty-four. The next project is called Innovation Center at Brentwood, previously known as P A One. This project will consist of constructing Jeffrey Way extension starting from Amber Lane up to Empire Avenue. It will include installing some of the underground utilities such as water, sewer, recycle water, and dry utilities, which will cross and extend from Empire Avenue, crossing Highway Four and serving the properties just west of Highway Four. This project also requires right-of-way acquisition. City currently is preparing the easement documents and in the process of waiting to complete some of the right-of-way acquisition with the private properties. The development of this critical project will definitely assist future projects in the Innovation Center. The total project cost is approximately twelve million dollars. Our annual ongoing payment management program, P M P, will perform preventive maintenance on the city roads to improve its lifespan as well as preventive maintenance projects. It's far less expensive than replacing or rebuilding an entire roadway. Thus, city staff recommends to continue with this projects on an annual basis. The next project I have is called Pearson Drive, Foothill Drive Waterline Improvement Project. This is a small project giving a large impact. This project is identified in our adopted water master plan to improve the quality of water distribution, circulation, and operation as well as it will improve the efficiency of the pressure in Zone Two. This project will install approximately seven hundred lineal feet of twelve-inch pipeline on the future Foothill Drive, starting from Pearson Drive up to John Muir Parkway. This project also requires right-of-way acquisition. The total project cost is approximately a million dollars. Our ongoing wastewater treatment plant expansion project will consist of expanding the treatment of the wastewater from five million gallons a day up to six point four million gallons a day. This project will construct a new erosion basin, retrofit an existing erosion basin, will also construct a new secondary clarifier, and upgrade some of the existing electrical distribution system throughout the plant. The next phase on this project will include constructing a biosolids dryer, which will manage the sludge. The improvements on this project will keep the city in compliance with the state and the federal regulations. The project is approximately sixty percent complete, and it is anticipated to complete by end of twenty-twenty-four. The next project is called Downtown Alleyway Rehab Project. This project will replace some of the existing water and sewer mains on Midway from Pine and Birch Street as well as on Parkway from Chestnut to Birch Street. The project's scope includes replacing about twenty-five hundred lineal feet of sewer and water mains as well as installing sewer and the service laterals, water service laterals, as well as some other appurtenances related to those. The project also rebuilds, once these utilities are replaced, will rebuild the alleyway using a new paved road. The total project cost is approximately three million dollars, and it's anticipated to start construction this summer. Finally, the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Amphitheater Project is currently being worked with our environmental consultant, and we are in the process of reviewing its environmental documentation. This project is a design-build project, and it is anticipated to begin construction in spring of twenty-twenty-four. With that, I will turn it to Bruce.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I guess we'll save one of our most exciting projects here for last to talk about. So I just want to give a brief update on our Sand Creek Sports Complex. As you know, we have been working with Verde Design, who we brought in as a consultant to design this project. So we are currently in the design phase and the environmental review sequa phase as well. We have held a couple of, we've gone through a community outreach process, and we've held a couple of community meetings where we reviewed a lot of different options for the park with our residents. And then that master plan was brought to our Park and Rec Commission on April twenty-seventh, where they were presented with the plan, and they approved the concept, the overall plan of the park, to move that forward. Unfortunately, as you know, that plan came in much higher than anticipated with the overall cost. So the Verde consultants have provided us with cost estimates, and that overall plan for the park came at a cost of a price tag of thirty million dollars. We have fifteen million dollars to fund this project for the park, so we have quite a gap there in what we can do to move this park forward. So we've been working with Verde Design, and we have talked about what can we do to phase the park with the ultimate goal in this first phase of getting in the soccer fields and with the goal of, you know, getting our youth in the park, kicking the soccer ball around and getting this project started. So that's our ultimate goal, to put in three full-size synthetic turf soccer fields with lights and with adequate parking for the soccer fields and with the basic infrastructure of restrooms and concessions. The consultant has given an estimate of twenty point four million dollars. And then looking at the rest of the park in phases and some of the other amenities can be bid alternatives depending on where the bid comes in for the park. So we do have quite a bit of gap between our fifteen million dollars and twenty point four to get us to synthetic turf soccer fields with lights to really get us going as far as what the community wants for those soccer fields. So I just wanted to provide that update, and I will turn it back over to Sonya. Finance has been coming up with some ideas for some additional funding, and she wanted to review that this evening.
Thank you, Bruce. As mentioned, the consultant has provided an estimate for this first phasing of the project of approximately twenty point four million, while we know the current project budget is at fifteen million. So staff has focused on finding ways to close this gap with potential funding options that would avoid impacting other projects or city fiscal sustainability and has identified several sources which could be utilized to increase the project budget to nineteen point two million. To achieve this funding threshold, staff is recommending that the Sand Creek Sports Complex budget be amended to include the following new funding sources: An additional contribution from the general fund of approximately one point six million dollars. The majority of this amount consists of the net proceeds from the sale of the Technology Center, with a small remaining component coming from the return of excess general fund funding for some projects that will be closed out. Next, approximately three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from repurposed bond proceeds, a four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar availability of bond refinance savings, and the remaining portion of one point seven million from an additional contribution from the Parks and Trails Development Impact Fee Fund. While the use of all these sources would reduce discretionary capital project funding availability over the next budget cycle, it would not impact existing operations or capital projects. Staff has outlined additional funding options along with the associated impacts in the memo that was provided along with the CIP draft, which could be considered if the council's direction is to increase the project budget to the full initial estimate of twenty point four million at this time. Tonight, we do have staff from all departments here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the draft CIP. And with that, I would like to turn the workshop over to the city council for their discussion and direction.
Are there any clarifying questions, staff?
I have questions. Good afternoon to everyone. To Mr. Mulder, Director Mulder, do you have any idea from the, make sure I'm going right to the right place for my questions, our consultants, do they have an idea of how many phases the park may undertake and any idea what the estimate will be for the other phases? Other question, third question, I know this is a compound question. And also, would residents be able to use the park during the interim phases?
So they gave the estimate of thirty million to do the entire park. They broke that. The twenty point four million estimate is basically pulling out, as the first phase, the soccer fields, the lighting, the parking, and the restrooms concession. And then the other ten million dollars would be the other amenities of the park. So those amenities include picnic areas, playground, sport courts. There's a bicycle pump track as part of that plan. So the first phase is really focused on the soccer fields and making sure those fields are built with lights. If you put in synthetic turf fields, you really want to maximize the use of those fields. So the lighting is really important as well. And they looked also at the parking lot. The original full plan has a larger parking lot. They are looking at a smaller-sized parking lot, but then part of that parking lot being like an overflow area and not like DG instead of like fully paved to be able to value that engineer number down to closer to that twenty million dollars. So as the phasing would go, it'd be a future time to be able to phase in the other ten million-dollar components. We can also do bid alternatives for some of the sport courts and things like that to see what the bid comes in at. They did their cost estimate based on their history and professional knowledge of the cost for projects. They bid a lot of projects, and so these are their consultant cost estimates. These are not engineering cost estimates. So it could be when we get to that bid phase that the numbers may come in less. There is also quite a bit of contingency that's built into the project, so it could be that not all of that contingency is needed as well. I think it's about six or seven percent for construction contingency and another six or seven percent for design contingency. So it could be that all of that contingency is not needed as well, which would allow us to, through bid alternatives, add some of those additional amenities, possibly playgrounds, picnic areas, or sport courts.
Thank you. And did they say during the multiple phases it would have utility? Or does it have to be completely done with all the phases to have utility by residents?
So, I'm sorry.
Phase one, if phase one was completed and we didn't get to a phase two yet, would people be able to use it at the completion of phase one?
Yeah, at the completion of phase one, they'll be able to use the soccer fields. The other areas would just be turf grass, like right now, until those other areas were put in. But yes, the park will be able to be used, phase one, for the soccer fields right away, once that's built.
Yeah, I think at the public meetings, it appeared there were only two phases. It sounds like there's going to be now three phases, because I think there was the discussion of phase two on the big projections where it was the county area. That would be then a phase three separate from the two phases you're speaking of tonight.
Yes, that's a very good point. So originally was, we talked about two phases, the city portion being phase one and the county basin being phase two. And now we are looking at two phases just for the city portion of the park and the county portion being a third phase.
Thank you. And then I don't want to take away from anybody else asking questions, but I know that the, looking at the Sand Creek Sports Complex juxtaposing it to the amphitheater seems so much more in cost. Do we have a current, is this the amphitheater, are these estimates current? Or do we think they're going to be higher for the amphitheater? Or it just seems like for it to be really equitable as far as size and project, this one is double the cost of the amphitheater.
Yeah, honestly, I was pretty shocked. The thirty million dollar number, it's pretty shocking to me. But, you know, the numbers that we got for the amphitheater are now a couple of years old as well, and I wouldn't be surprised if that also, when we put that out to bid, that comes in higher than we anticipate as well, which will also mean we might have to have a conversation about phasing for the amphitheater as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have some questions. When it comes to the soccer fields, when we go through all of the line items, I think there's some stuff that we have opportunities with. For example, the EV chargers, I think they were like, they're eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars for EV chargers. Is there where we could partner with a company to come in and do it, so we're not doing that, they're doing it, and they can manage all of that? Or is there any grants? Because I know we constantly get emails about EV charger grants.
It is possible, and I just want to note too that this phasing plan will need to come back to the city council for further clarification and direction as well. So when we talk about the twenty point four million and specifically what is included in that, we will have the consultant bring this phasing plan back to the council so you can provide some clarification and be able to ask these questions of the consultant. But that, there might be an opportunity to do that, yes.
Yeah, because I think there's a lot of opportunity. The bleachers, I don't know of any real soccer, kid soccer field that has bleachers, so that's a cut. The pickleball courts, I think we can cut right now and wait for that for that later. I think that comes up to almost six hundred thousand dollars on that alone. Yeah, I think you mentioned cutting the concession stand and putting just a restroom, so that would be a savings of six hundred thousand dollars. What else was I looking at? The EV chargers, that, all of the electrical that has to go with the tennis and pickleball courts, that's another hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The electrical for the concession stand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So I think there's a lot of opportunity, and I think we probably need to go through that. Looking at all of the line items, I don't think we even need the twenty million. I think we can come in a lot lower than that. I mean, it's our job, they're our vendor, right? It's their job to want to. So I think we can come in lower. And the other thing is, this has a twenty-nine point five percent contingency. I've never seen you all bring a contract forward with twenty-nine point five percent, so it's usually ten. So hopefully, we can get back to that ten percent. I don't know why we would do thirty, almost thirty percent. That seems like a huge, huge amount. So that would be my feedback on that. But we'll wait, I guess, until it comes back, and then we can go line item by line item and kind of do a plug-and-play of what we all want to see and how that nets out. My other question, and you're seeing it, I'm sure you're seeing everything online about our rate increase. So I had sent Tim a spreadsheet, and I think one of the things we need to understand when it comes to the rate increase, and me as a resident also, because I've never seen an increase like this before. Like twenty thirteen, it was like two point eight for garbage, three for wastewater, three for water. In twenty eighteen, it was three for garbage, four point four for wastewater, three point five for water. And now we're doing six percent for garbage, six point four for water, and three point six. So I really need to understand, like, what are all of the drivers that are driving the increase? What are must-haves, what are nice-to-haves, and then what are state mandates? Because also, some of it is state mandated. We can't do anything about it. But we should be able to tell our residents what they're paying for and why, right? And if there's any opportunity to cut anything, we should look at that, because year one, it's a hundred and seventy-three dollars that we're going to go up to from a hundred and sixty-five. By year ten, it's two hundred and ten, so that is a twenty-seven point one percent increase. And just understanding year over year, every single thing that's going into that would be helpful, because that's a huge increase. So I think we need to relook at some of those projects. I don't know if tonight is the night, but I do think we need to go through some of those with a fine-tooth comb.
I'm sorry, was it a specific question?
So can we, I had sent Tim a spreadsheet. Have you gotten that?
I have not seen it. I will say that the rate study questions are sort of related to CIP, but I don't think we would be prepared to answer a lot of rate study questions tonight.
But I think CIP rolls into your rate increase, right?
Certainly.
Because CIPs are rolling into this, so that's kind of the portion that I'm wondering about.
That's certainly a portion of it. But Sonja, you can help me. But there's, rate study is a much broader question. There are a few things, and I will certainly tell you. SB 1383 is the single biggest legislative driver. But I will also tell you, we're not going to come ask for more than we need in a budget. So if you say, what can we cut, it's going to come at the cost of services.
Okay. So if we could just have that detail, because that is, we owe it to our residents to give them the feedback. So if we don't have that tonight, that's fine. But when we come back in June, we should also be able to speak to that. And what portion is the CIP projects on that one? The Brentwood Boulevard project. So we didn't get the grant. So what have we already spent, so that's a sunk cost? And what do we have to spend? And what if we were to stop it now and try to get more grants? How does that work?
So one of the grant that we applied for Brentwood Boulevard was about, I want to say whether we qualify for as a low income area or low income resident area. And definitely, our city does not qualify for that. Thus, that grant was not approved. Any other grants, we have to dive into and try to look for additional funding. We can certainly be doing, continue to do that and try to see if we can get additional funding. Then we can provide larger scope at this point. But as of now, about 3.5 million, including all the money that has been spent, 3.5 is approximately what we have.
What you have left to use.
To use, correct.
We've always heard that development is what pays for roads. The city doesn't pay for the roads. Do we have development that you think is coming to that area that would pay for this road?
It's in a planning stage. Some of the development that is north of Sunset along Brentwood Boulevard. It is certainly in a planning stage. But again, the development market, it all depends on that timing, when they would come. So we cannot totally depend on that. But we can defer some of the improvements for that. So we are kind of considering with all of that, as well as some of the additional funding that potentially that's out there in order to increase our total funding budget. So we are in the process of looking all of that.
And how much of it was unfunded? Was it the 3.5 total?
I would have to turn to you.
Currently, the funded portion of the project is about 3.7. We've only spent about $100,000 so far on this project.
And how much is unfunded?
And funded is 6.3 million. So that's not funded in the current document.
So I guess for tonight, my question is, Carrie and Tim, do, how do we approve a CIP when we don't have money for it?
Now, most of the projects in here are unfunded. Some of the larger ones, like the $40 million ones, the $92 million ones are all unfunded in fullness. So part of what the approval is, is giving us work, allowance to continue to work on chasing funds, to apply for loans, grants, wait for other funding sources that come available. So again, as we mentioned earlier, we don't initiate projects or contracts until we come back and get budgets approved and contracts approved. So continue to chase funds. One example would be, even the Sand Creek Road Extension, you authorize that to go out. Not completely funded either. But we have more funds coming in to cover it once we actually move forward on it, so.
So it's almost like we just keep kicking the can down the road until we get some money and then we do it.
There's a little bit of that. We try to chase as many projects as we can and different funding sources as become available.
So I guess to the public, it's kind of like, it's not like they're going to get this now. It's, we're hoping to get it and we're working on it. And as soon as we get the money, then it'll happen. So yeah.
And some of it can be done in phases, like the demolition of the former market. That can take place sooner. So it just depends on how we can phase some of it and get as much done as possible.
Okay, I think those were all my questions.
And then just to your rate question, I was thinking you were asking for that information for June 15th meeting, so sorry about that.
Further clarifying questions?
Thank you. Do we have any feedback from Liberty about the garage improvements that have happened so far?
So are you referring to the parking garage safety? Yes, so there are several different options that we have brainstormed last year. And then there are additional options that, after talking with the police department, with the chief, there were a few other options as well. We do have to get into and investigate a little bit more in order to finalize what we wanted to do. So at this point, we are not taking any action on that project. It is there, but it is just there in a way.
So have we interacted with the school at all to find out if they're seeing any improvements?
That's right. So our traffic engineer had worked with the school, Liberty High. And there are some of the actions that he has recommended. School have starting to close the back gate from, I believe, 3:20 to 3:45, just after the school is dismissed and the gate gets closed. So all the drop off or pickup is not happening in that area. So that has significantly helped on that parking garage. But there is likely additional work needs to be done to do the complete safety of that garage.
Okay. I know there's approximately 400,000 that was reserved for that. And I'm wondering if we can get an ongoing conversation with the school to find out what kind of improvements they're seeing on their side? Then maybe we don't need to designate quite that large of a portion. If we don't necessarily need the gate going up to the top, maybe there's some other mitigations we can take that are going to do what we need them to do.
We've had very preliminary discussions with them, just surrounding the concept. We haven't solicited feedback because we really don't have a complete design for it yet or we haven't engaged the design process. We've merely got ideas and budgetary quotes. So we will continue that. But for the interim, we really don't have enough time with the gate being closed to measure the impacts of that. So we will solicit feedback from them. And so far, it's working well, but we haven't had enough time yet to really circle back with them.
Okay. That was my main one, thank you.
If there are any, okay.
I have one more question. And I wasn't really able to ascertain it from the summaries. I know that one of the things that Mickey stated before he left was there was one thing making him lose sleep at night. And that was this one main plumbing, I call it plumbing piece because that's my level of understanding of what you do is huge. But this main water line across the city. Are any of these projects aiding in supporting that main water line? Or projects that will help us in the event of an emergency and something happens to that line? Because I think that's very concerning, that if something happens, we're without water.
You are correct. And no, that particular project is not in this CIP, but it is something that we're working on behind the scenes. We will be bringing some options to you here later this year with the results of a feasibility study that we've done, looking at options to mitigate that risk. And once we have those options and have some council directions, then we'll implement a CIP program, get it in the books and try to find funding for it. But that's far enough out, just logistically, that it wasn't included in this budget because we wouldn't need any funding for that yet.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further clarifying questions of staff, at this time, we will open public comments. Margaret?
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. I currently have three speaker cards for in-person and one hand raised in Zoom currently. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person. Your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And the first speaker is Rod.
Back again. Wasn't really expecting to be doing this this year, but here we are. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. On January 24th, during a discussion of the strategic plan, council members Orlemans and Pearson chose to attack item 1D, which is the sound wall. Orlemans asked Mickey Subota, then the city engineer, some questions. Mickey quoted some inaccurate information that Orlemans then picked up and ran with. He expressed amazement that this wall would only help two houses, which is just not true. He believed a three-decibel decrease is barely perceptible, which is not true. I tested this tonight with a decibel meter sitting in front of my stereo and I can very, very well hear a three-decibel increase of over 65. So it's, at that volume level, three decimals is a 23% increase, as we've learned. And it's very perceptible. Mickey thought the budget might go over 600K, but probably would actually be less than it is. As we can see, it's only 390 on the low, 390K on the low end, 435K on the high end. That's six or seven bucks per Brentwood resident, to address this wrong. Orlemans then made the alarming assertion, "We should only spend money on projects that benefit the entire city, a policy that would leave the neighborhoods to fend for themselves on any of their local issues." "We at the Alliance stand with all the neighborhoods and encourage everyone to do the same. Otherwise, we will all be screwed when it is our turn to need some help from the city. This is not the way we do things in Brentwood. We care about everyone. We don't make up phony numbers to kowtow to the powerful people." Pearson then weighed in, noting the similarity of the expense to the number for a CalPERS adjustment that is needed and will be paid from the general fund. "This is more smoke and mirrors, as if two line items from separate parts of the budget are necessarily linked together, if they're not." I want to say for the record that Carrie Breen and his literally award-winning staff, and you know our accountants are some of the best in the county, are they never going to let us default on our, the city default on our obligations? It's just a slap in the face to our accounting staff, as if to say they would let some infrastructure projects interfere with responsible management of the budget. Those things get paid first. We can do both. It's already reflected in the budget, along with a myriad of other city expenses. Pearson chooses to ignore. She just wants to stick it to the Sienna neighborhood for reasons she won't come out and say. That, or she really just doesn't know anything about accounting, which would be even more alarming in a city council member. Make no mistake, Orlemans and Pearson are out to kill the sound wall. They made these statements on January 24th and then again on April 25, two weeks ago. They also, at that time, improperly discussed their objections to the project without a properly noticed agenda item, after they had already both voted to support the sound wall and authorized the contract. They made a motion to reconsider, but went way over the line in describing what they considered to be problems with the project, instead of leaving that for tonight, when the project will again be on the consent calendar. They should both recuse themselves at this time. From this issue, Orlemans even more so because at that meeting, he expressed through his crazed outrage that he cared deeply about having the opportunity to kill this small project, so much so that he completely lost his mind and stormed out of the public meeting, even though he was in fact able to move for a reconsideration and simply needed to do it. Orlemans must recuse or put the city at far more financial risk than a few hundred thousand dollars. He doesn't care anything about that. He's determined to stick it to the Sienna neighborhood at any cost. Pearson and Orlemans wanted to delay the contract approval until after the CIP discussion tonight, so they can kill this project during the CIP discussion. That much is clear. What is not clear are their motivations. And what seems most likely is they're trying to please their real constituents, the rich and powerful who are increasingly dissatisfied with the principled stance taken by the city council these last two years. They cannot get their way without having to earn it and they want to go back to the bad old days as city councils rubber stamping every project instead of giving them proper consideration. Brentwoods who care about saving what we have left to save with the old Brentwood and our quality of life will do well to regard these two with deep suspicion. How can we not, after the pathetic and alarming display put on by Orlemans and Pearson at the previous city council meeting? What I can tell you about the wall is it will help and we'll work together with the road resurfacing to help more. They're not mutually exclusive. The effects are cumulative. 23% reduction for the sound wall, 23% reduction for the pavement. So that's a 46% reduction in noise. People of Sienna suffer every day. There's no need to wait. Everyone along Highway 4 corridor understands what it's like to live with this noise and they can see the pictures of the Sienna sound wall and understand how much these good people are suffering because their sound wall is so inferior to everybody else's. I beg the remaining three on the council to stand firm in your already well-considered decision. Continue to support this project and get it done tonight. This has gone on long enough, thank you.
The next speaker is Danny Dorman.
Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to thank Rod, because I thought I was going to be the first one to do the five minutes. And I'm actually going to try not to. Between 2009 and 2016, Barack Obama pushed through policies that many politicians and backroom lobbyists couldn't stand. They tried time and again to overturn or roll back these policies. In 2016, during his first five months in office, Donald Trump rolled back these policies. It was surmised that he and his backroom lobbyists just didn't like our president, to the point that it seemed like a mission to ruin him by reversing these policies. Fast forward to April. There are so many similarities, specifically the sound wall. Two of our newest council members want so badly to shut this down, starting from the first attempt at a motion by Councilwoman Pearson in January, specifically January 24th. They wanted so badly that one flew off in a hissy fit. And the other forced staff to find some arcane rule, allowing the overturn of a motion they both voted affirmative. To what end? I have my suspicions and I voice them. My guess tonight, they would do everything in their extremely limited power to quash the sound wall, if not everything the previous council did. This feeble-minded scam will show the true intent of these two. Now, a quick comment about the CIP at large. If our city does not upgrade our 1990s infrastructure to something resembling a serious attempt to get top companies, we will be wasting money. I didn't hear it, and maybe this goes in some of the behind the scenes that was mentioned earlier. But I hope we address sonnet ring upgrades, microwave transmission strategies, at least a level-two IT hardening of our core man. Metaprolactin is the M. And if staff has no idea what I just said, we are doomed. Thank you.
The next speaker is Antonio Xavier.
I ask the city council to leave the sound wall project funded, as is, and hold further discussion as part of the regular meeting later this evening. This overall project has been in progress since 2019. When I watched prior meetings, it was very obvious that addressing Route 4 noise is an important issue to a large segment of the Brentwood community. There was one meeting in particular, held December 10, 2019, that struck a chord with me. During the council discussion, before the vote was taken to initiate the sound study, then-Vice Mayor Joel Bryant gave a powerful speech that is worth repeating. Let's start doing things in doable amounts. There is just no financial way we could pass enough bonds or raise enough taxes to cover a sound adjustment through the entire city. So let's do something that is reasonable, that we can do. I agree 100% with those sentiments. So what reasonable thing can we do? Tonight, we have the chance to address an extreme situation to help those who need it most. The Sienna community is located closer to Route 4 than any other residential community in Brentwood. Route 4 bypass construction moved that road closer than the previous location. The Sienna community has smaller sound walls than any other residential community in Brentwood, with sound wall mitigation along Route 4. Route 4 bypass construction elevated the road from its prior location and exacerbated that situation. As you drive by on Route 4, you can now see directly into the first floor of multiple homes in the Sienna community. I sent you this image email. It's in your packet, it's also in the council packet online. You can see the first floor of these homes. When you look at them side by side and compare the sound walls of this community and elsewhere along Route 4, you can't help but see the sound wall at Sienna is an absolute embarrassment. Can we fix all of their problems? No. Nobody is under the impression that this project is a magical cure-all. But we can start by doing something in doable amounts that is reasonable to do. Raising the sound wall to intercept direct line of sight to Route 4 is a small step in the right direction. The project has already been discussed in great detail. What more is there at this point in the project pipeline? It's fully funded and the winning contract came in. It's fully funded and the winning contract came in under budget. This is exactly the kind of thing that should have the green light from the city council. What does Brentwood gain from aborting the project at this stage? Are you simply trying to save money? Don't forget to subtract the seventy thousand dollars or more already used for consultants and other staff-related expenses that will be wasted with no benefit if you kill this project. How is Brentwood harmed from aborting this project? You will be sending a message to the residents of the Sienna community and other neighborhoods that you don't care about their problems because they are too small. You create precedent for future CIP projects to be yanked after every election, regardless of their progress in the pipeline. And the most dangerous impact, in my opinion, is that you create a precedent for a limited benefit analysis for all future infrastructure projects. Sidewalk repairs, street repairs, and all other infrastructure projects are at risk of being chopped because they provide limited benefits. How many homes at the end of a cul-de-sac have to benefit to be worth spending on? How many homes at the edge of a residential community have to benefit before they're worth spending on? After tonight, who knows? There is one more piece of harm to Brentwood, and that involves how we got to this point. You know, based on the community feedback, there will be many Brentwood residents attending the regular seven P M. meeting to discuss the sound wall in relation to agenda item C four. You were the ones that maneuvered to delay the expected approval of a contract at the last meeting. Do you remember the words you used to justify the delay? What's another two weeks? This right here is why we saw that outburst two weeks ago. Delaying this item to tonight gave you the opportunity to kill a previously approved project in a special workshop outside of the regular city council meetings. Brentwood is a known bedroom community and most of the residents are unable to attend this special workshop and speak for themselves. At the beginning of this CIP presentation, there was a slide showing Brentwood's mission statement and core values. If you kill this project in the special workshop while residents are unavailable, you may as well delete integrity, accountability, and respect from those values. Because this political maneuvering is about as bad as I've ever seen in the city council towards the residents of Brentwood. Killing this project in this fashion would harm the reputation of Brentwood and the trust in our public officials. Leave the sound wall project funded, as is.
The speaker's timer has expired. I have no additional in-person speaker cards. I do have three hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Karen Rary. Karen, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I wasn't going to be speaking at all, but I got lots of phone calls. First off, I, I'd like to find out what's going on with the six million dollar land and water conservation grant for Sand Creek Sports Complex that I forwarded to staff several, well, in two thousand twenty-one and also brought up in two thousand twenty-two. That's six million dollars that's sitting on the table that didn't come up this evening at all. Now on to, to the thing that, that I have been asked to speak about. I, I gotta admit, it truly baffles me that an item, the Highway Four Sound Wall, which was fast-tracked in two thousand twenty-one to be funded and constructed. Construction began before the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget went into effect in July of two thousand twenty-two, that it's just now coming back to the council. What has happened that it has been sitting on staff's desk for that long? What these two new council members who pulled this item don't understand is that increasing the size of sound wall was not done to be, was not to be done in a silo. At the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, it was decided to be a three-prong attack. Increase the sound wall by three feet, Public Works. Apply rubberized asphalt to Highway Four currently scheduled by Caltrans and target speeders along the highway, Brentwood PD and CHP. During the eleven sixteen twenty-one meeting, multiple mitigations were suggested to help reduce the noise on that segmented roadway. On page one eighteen of that agenda, it said an increase in barrier height of three feet may yield an additional traffic noise attuation of three decibels. Couple of that with Caltrans' plan to install the degraded rubberized asphalt for that section, presumably this year, which will help to reduce noise by another couple of decibels and targeted traffic stop, but could also reduce the noise level up to five decibels. I know the couple of times I clocked traffic on that stretch of roadway, cars were traveling between seventy and eighty-five miles per hour. That's well over the fifty-five mile per hour end freeway limit that is right there at that exit. During that November two thousand twenty-one meeting, Chief Hanson committed Brentwood PD manpower to ticket speeders in that area. Hopefully, Chief Herbert has committed to allocating manpower for this as well. As far as the sound wall along the Sienna community, the majority of that sound wall is about thirteen to fourteen feet high, except a single portion of the wall, the section closest to the offering, which is only ten foot high. The fact is that every development, and I got out there and measured with a measuring tape, Tuscany, Apple Hills, Somerset, one, two, three, and four, all along Highway Four, has a minimum of twelve-foot-high sound wall. The, the one at Somerset, two, three, and four was, was put in after the fact. It was just, it was at first said that they weren't supposed to have a sound wall there at all, but then the city worked with the, the developer and they, they built it, which just so happens to be the same developer. At first, it was Blackhawk Nun, same one that, that built the sound wall there at, at Sienna. So why only a ten-foot wall at the closest and lowest section of highway next to the development? The city failed the Sienna community when it allowed for a multi-level sound wall, especially considering the expansion Highway Four would sit higher than the sound wall at the lowest section, which is the section in question. Even in two thousand twenty-one, when Bridle Gate was proposed at Sand Creek Road and Highway Four, a twenty-foot sound wall was proposed for that development. Yet only ten-foot at Sienna, which is going to sit even closer than the Bridle Gate. But they get a twenty-foot wall, Sienna got a ten-foot. The city also failed the Sienna community during the Balfour Road interchange E I R. The sound study done for that E R, E R R was done at the Somerset Two community, not the Sienna community, which was impacted the most by the two hundred and fifty-foot expansion of the roadway. Sienna is now the closest development of any development to Highway Four, where before it was almost a football field away from the roadway. I, I'm, I'm asking you, it, it's come in under budget and, and please follow through on this commitment and approve this, this improvement to the sound wall. It, it's time has come.
The speaker's timer had expired. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, um, thank you. Wow, it was so nice to hear from Karen. That's fantastic. She still cares about the residents of Brentwood. So I want to thank her for jumping on since she's the one that kind of spearheaded this project. And really, I just want to talk to Joel. Been coming to these meetings long enough since the new iteration of city council and it's pretty clear to me that we have a two-two situation. I, I would be shocked if it was not a two-two situation. And so that leaves your vote. You have been doing some really good work up to now and I really think that the residents are looking to you for representation and leadership on this issue. Everybody can go through all the details of the wall, why it was built wrong, why it wasn't fixed, the decibels, it, it was a mistake. It's a mistake that the city made and made at very diff, at many different portions of the process of building that project. So now it's time to fix it. And it's time for leadership and for you, with your vote, to show that you represent all of the residents in Brentwood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marisol Valles, followed by Sinziana Todor. Marisol, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say, as a Deer Ridge resident, I was very happy when the council came together with the city to support Deer Ridge in our time of need when a developer let us down. And I hope this continues. So as others came to support Deer Ridge, I'm here to say I support the sound wall being approved later today. This is years in the making and you should help every Brentwood resident when the city makes it wrong. Plus, as many others mentioned, the bid did come in under budget. And so to please, to Pat, Tanisha, and Tony, do not continue to spin this item. Rod said it all perfectly earlier and I wish I can copy and paste his comments, but I think you have enough copy and paste going on this evening. So please move forward tonight on the sound wall. I would also like to support the Sound Creek Sports Complex Phase One with the modifications to look over all the line items of that Phase One. Some, some feedbacks for potentially, when it comes back for the cuts, is the scoreboards. Scoreboards currently aren't available at Sunset and they don't really make an impact for the soccer tournaments or league games. The concession stands at Sunset aren't typically used during soccer games. So the concession stand building is only really used during the soccer tournament. But honestly, food trucks would be a greater option than the concession plaza area if, you know, we had our preferences. There's also only one set of bathrooms at Sunset with three stalls in each. So having one set of restrooms with about five stalls at the new sports complex should be more than sufficient. If, if more restrooms are needed during tournaments, porta-potties have been rented in the past, which we could do again. Other items on the design that may be nice to have but not needed are things such as the pickleball or foot, footsall courts, the bleachers. It may be good to go through the line by line so we can see what can be taken out if deemed unnecessary for this first phase. The main items to make sure to keep at the sports complex during the first phase are the three large fleet, uh, fields. No bleachers, no scoreboard, one building for restroom by the parking lot, lights, and keeping the full, large parking lot, not a modified, smaller version. Having these items means the city can begin to receive revenue immediately once complete. I hope some of this can be given to the designer again in advance so when it comes back for scrutiny, that, that can already be part of that conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sinziana Todor, followed by Dash. Sinziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to support Sienna community. They are Brentwoodians. We're all Brentwoodians. We should band together. So I'm asking you to please keep the funding for CIP project for Highway Four Sound Wall on the list and allow the work to start by approving the, uh, contract later on tonight. And most importantly, I'm asking the city to keep their promise to the residents. This project is already approved and the bid came under the budgeted amount. Canceling this project will send a clear message to the residents that our city council and city government does not care about the residents. For the last six years, residents of Sienna neighborhood and beyond, along with previous city councils, did a lot of research, worked with involved agencies, and concluded the best solution to alleviate this problem is for the wall to be raised. After endless conversations, the decision was made to do right by residents since this was an oversight and lack of due diligence on the city side. When I say city side, I am referring to elected and appointed officials along with staff who were supposed to provide subject matter expertise to support decision-making. And I feel somewhat responsible as a resident for not paying attention and holding the city accountable to align with the standard we see all along Highway Four bypass. The sound wall behind Sienna neighborhood is the lowest height along Highway Four bypass, not aligned with the height of the freeway to actually block the noise. Bottom line is not up to standard and all this project is doing is to make things not perfect, but better for the residents. As one of my favorite political commentators said, "It is forgivable to do something wrong, but it is unforgivable to do the same thing wrong again." Wait, the wait is over. Six years is long enough. Keep this project on the list and get the wall fixed. I can share my story from early two thousands when my husband and I lived in Shadow Lakes Off West Country Club. We loved keeping our windows open at night to let fresh air in. We were able to do that until Highway Four bypass was completed, open, uh, completely open around two thousand ten, if I'm not mistaken. It was then when the noise level significantly increased and even though we were so far away from the freeway, we could not keep our windows open at night and get a good night's sleep. And yeah, our C C N Rs did not specify the noise increase or any plans for this bypass to be built at the time we bought, but we felt it and we were impacted by it. So imagine the noise level experienced by Sienna residents right on the freeway without any wall or other homes to block the sound. One can argue that three, four, five decibels will not make a difference, but it is important to listen to people's experience and how they are impacted by this nuisance. And you, as elected official, have the duty to take this into consideration, not just by what the report published by a contractor hired by the city for C Y A says. Please take all these reports with a grain of salt. We've seen differences in measurements in excess of ten to twenty decibels when independent sound tests were done. One example is Rotten Robbie Project, their car wash tunnel facing the homes directly across the street in Brentwood. And the city approved that, so that's another nuisance that's coming up. Quick Walk Car Wash in Oakley had the same issue and it's been proven to their council, the measurements done by the city contractor were wrong. And I can list more projects, but I don't have time. What's important for tonight for, is for this project to be completed, to keep residents of Sienna neighborhood safe and ensure a decent quality of life. This is the least the city can do to restore trust and credibility with the Brentwood community. A vote against this project is a vote against the residents you claim you are representing. The city council is entrusted with making decisions that directly affect the daily lives of residents and their families. Please make the right decision for the Sienna neighborhood. Keep the sound project on the list, the sound wall projects on the list and restore residents' quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dash. Dash, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. This is Dash here. I don't have many residents now because of the timing, but they'll be at the seven o'clock meeting. I want to really thank Rod and everyone, even Karen. I was really excited to see her speaking on this agenda, the sound wall at the Sienna, who has spearheaded this project from the beginning. And they have touched all the prime points on the, on this project. What was, what was missed out, what is going to fix the issues and everything. But what I will do is I'll specifically talk about the noise study that the report was published on October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The reason the noise study was done in Sienna because in two thousand six or two thousand fourteen, when the Tri Delta meeting was done, when the clearance was given to Highway Authority to expand this Highway Four bypass, never a noise study was done in Sienna. And that is the major issue because everything was done in Somerset and all the calculation was based on Somerset community, nothing on the Sienna. But the readings that was published on October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, that report is not perfect. I had sent an email on November fifteen, two thousand twenty-one to city council and market and everyone with list of questions from the vendor who did this noise study with the, with the really great questions and never got an answer. And here are some of the questions I, I, I just want to say it on the meeting. The first question was that was any calibration of the equipment was done prior to installing those equipments? No answer to that. Second was that the site number five, which is my location, seven hours of reading was deleted from three P M. to ten P M. The reason, they said like maybe a leaf blower was at that moment working, which generated a lot of noise. Who is going to use a leaf blower at like nine P M. or ten P M.? And that time it was COVID fix time, like, you know? So the reasons were not very valid. There was another thing I mentioned on May twenty-eighth to the Assistant City Manager Terrence and copied everyone that they should add four D V. to the reading for the impact on rain because you need to design a system to the extreme, not just to the bare minimum so that, you know, when, when, when. when 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 extreme condition happens, it fails. But those 4 dB was never added because the readings were so good on the report, like 64, 63, where the city limit was 65. So it seems like it was all manipulated. Then on page 21 on the report says that the the homeowner should redesign his bedroom so that it should be away from the highway. I was never even involved when I bought a house, the where the bedroom of my house should be, you know? It was all approved by the city, the planning or the developer, whoever. I just bought the house as it was built. So I never knew that my bedroom should be away from Highway Four, so that I can I can have a good sleep, you know? So these are some of those point. Okay, one more point. They had said like, no, the locations at 1 to 4 near the Sand Creek doesn't need any sound wall. But we know from Bridle Gate project, they had recommended a 12 to 15 feet sound wall. So how does this sound, this company says at the time that they don't need a sound wall, whereas Bridle, when they try to put their community and everything, they wanted a 12 to 15 feet sound wall. So there was a lot of faults on those reports, which I will be discussing more in detail at seven o'clock. But my request is that do not take out this project from the discussion. This should be moving forward as promised, and we have great hopes on the city council and and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised and no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will close public comments, move into council discussion. Councilman Orlemans.
Well, it seems like the majority of those comments were directed at one item on the CIP, so I'll address the same item. As was very clearly pointed out, I was I originally discussed this on January 24th, where I had said I had some questions about this sound wall. I did that with the intention of giving everyone the opportunity to answer and let me know what I wasn't seeing in the in the proposals that I was getting. I've watched every single council meeting where the wall was discussed. Most of the public comments at those meetings were from a group of about 10 to 15 people, and they were the same people almost every time. I appreciate their civic interaction, but there are 67,000 other people in the city of Brentwood besides the 15 or 16 people that are speaking and sending letters in to us. We're not just taking into account the people that stand at the podium before us. We're taking into account everyone. The sound sound study shows from on Highway Four, the area where the wall is proposed to be below the sound requirements of 65 decibels, which is imposed by the city of Brentwood. It's below the sound. I don't know why we're still talking about it. The sound expert said that a three feet additional sound wall will only lower the nose, the noise in this area by three decibels. And he said three decibels is nearly imperceptible to the human ear. I'm going to skip this whole paragraph I have where I discuss what happened at the last council meeting, and we're just going to continue on with. Rod Flore is the only person that has even tried to logically explain why this sound wall should be approved, why it was a good idea. He gave an effort at it. Rod stated that the information provided by the experts was inaccurate, I believe was the word he used. He alluded several times that the expert was intentionally misleading the public. Rod argued that the difference between 60 and 63 decibels was a 33% increase in the sound. Councilmember Pearson and I went to an audiologist. We asked the questions. He, his explanation was that from 60 to 63 decibels is a 33% increase in energy to produce the sound. But the actual noise perceived by the human ear is very slight and almost imperceptible. Councilmember Pearson and I both had the audiologist play sound at for us at 60, then 63 decibels. We listened over and over and over again, separately, not together, not discussing our opinion between. I know it's going to be hard to believe, but that sound was almost imperceptible, a difference of three decibels. I don't think a difference of three decibels will make a difference for those few homes that it's going to affect. Whoop, they, when they determine that they're not getting the relief they want, they're going to come back and ask for another sound mediation. They're gonna continue to come back. And if we do build this wall, then we are going to be leaving ourselves open, in my opinion, for other people such as myself, who lives right on Balfour, extremely close to the intersection where it intersects with Griffith Lane. And I get to listen to everybody's stereo when I sit in my backyard, when they stop at the red light. So should I ask for my wall to be raised so that I can have peace and quiet in my backyard? I signed disclosures saying I knew that Balfour was there. Dash, I feel sorry for you, and I'm truly sorry that you're having to go through the issues you're going through. But you signed disclosures saying you knew this was going to happen. You were, you accepted it, and the builder told you what was going to happen. I don't know why we're still talking about putting in a sound wall. I
Any further discussion?
I would just like to refer to our general plan, which is our rules, like things that we're supposed to support. And on page 102, where existing traffic noise levels range between 60 and 65 decibels at an outdoor activity area of noise sensitive uses of three decibels plus increase in roadway noise levels will be considered significant. Our own rules of what we're supposed to support say that three is significant. So that is in our general plan. And again, it's not just one thing. It's cumulative things that are going to improve it. And I support the sound wall. Brentwood takes care of Brentwood. And I don't know what the bounty is before we decide to help someone. And I, we've done this since I've been on council. Someone comes forward and they need help, we will do everything we can. I mean, Darren and I were last night at the downtown Brentwood Coalition. A lot of people, I mean, you had left then, but businesses wanted to talk about issues going on. And we're, Darren's going to help businesses. It's one business. Do I say, you're just one business. I ain't gonna help you. Sorry. We don't, I don't do that. That's not why I ran for office. I ran to help as many people as I can. I do think it's going to help, and I support the sound wall.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So the sound wall falls under priority level one for a few reasons. This is on page 22 of the packet. Number one is safety obligations, because projects are required to ensure the safety of citizens. This project right now is causing health issues to Dash and his family. His doctor wrote us a note. Other people in this neighborhood wrote us letters to say that they're suffering respiratory problems. They're not allowed, they're not able, I should say, to get fresh air and to, and they're stuck in their houses all the time. I've been to the house. I've walked around the neighborhood multiple times. I went upstairs in Dash's house and heard with the windows open, with the windows closed, and completely understood everything he was talking about. I saw the letters from Senator Glazer and Assembly Member Frazier that said, this is a city responsibility. This is not a state responsibility. There's somebody out there spreading rumors that this is a state responsibility, which is completely false. In fact, Frazier's letter actually said, if you don't get the satisfaction you're looking for, let us know if you need some legal resources. So we could go that route if you prefer. I completely support the wall for multiple reasons, the the lack of an appropriate buffer zone, the fact that when this neighborhood was built, it was much further from Highway Four than than the residents had any idea was going to happen, given the way the the bypass was built. The difference in in sound walls, if the three feet doesn't make a difference, then why are the people three feet up not complaining at this point? I think I think it's ridiculous that we've even, we're still having this argument. I think this should have been passed already. I don't know why this wasn't funded when we originally agreed to have it funded. I have pages and pages of notes. I have binders full of documentation. I could sit here all night. The fact is, I support the wall, and I think it's ridiculous that we're even having any discussions about it any further.
So couple of little comments. One is there were comments about Deer Ridge and a mistake being made, and I have to agree, there was a mistake made. The mistake that was made was that when we took a estimate amount of what residents will pay, being basically taxed to pay that the residents in Deer Ridge pay for it, the city made a mistake by not giving the correct estimate. And the city remedied that mistake by saying, since we made a mistake with the estimated Deer Ridge, we'll come back and take care of the gap in the amount that we made a mistake for. Because why would we ever tell our residents one amount and then go back and ask for more after we came up with the number that they should pay? So for Deer Ridge vote, that was to cure a mistake. Here, when I bring up a mistake, it is when I talk about mistakes, I'm looking at what did we actually, and I'm not talking about what someone believes as moral or ethics or what feels good or I'm looking at what did the city do that they should not have done, what policies were not, that were violated, or what direct mistakes did the city make? I can't find one. There's questions about what the spin is or that I got information, I snuck and got information. Mr. Dash emailed us last meeting, his disclosures to the entire city council. So what stood out for me, because my responsibility, when I look at our general plan and our strategic goals, is to make sure financial responsibility. That's what people elected me for, and that's what I signed up for, to make sure we are financially responsible, in addition to all of the other things we're supposed to do. So that's my spin. So part of it is, when I look at things, I look at them holistically, at everything presented. The evidence that was presented to me last week by Mr. Dash in his disclosures, one says that living near public use areas such as parks may impact buyers' privacy and security. Then it goes, it says further down, State Route Four bypass. Nuisance associated with State Four Route bypass and/or the construction of future improvements may include, but not be limited to, noise pollution, noise, pollution, dust, vibration, glare, fumes, exhaust particles, nighttime construction lighting, construction traffic, traffic congestion and delays. Impacts from the State Route Four bypass may be noticeable at all hours of the day and night. And should impacts could, and such impacts could disturb sleep and disturb the quiet enjoyment of buyer's home. Future improvements to State Four bypass could involve the construction of new and additional sound walls near the community, and such walls could invat views within and from the community and the visual appearance of the community. The city of Brentwood, through the conditions of approval for a Sienna Village, requires that the current and future widening of State Four bypass be disclosed to buyers. This disclosure was then signed by the buyers, that they were aware that this was coming. So when I take that into consideration, I'm thinking about, hey, what happens when, for example, in one of our newer developments, there was a dual-zone AC unit on a bottom, in the bottom location of a home, one of the bedrooms was attached to the upper floor of the dual AC unit. When those residents are suffering from temperatures that are so cold that they can't even have those bottom floors, that one bedroom is not habitable. So they're not getting the full use of their square footage. Now they're complaining. They've called out the developer who says, hey, I looked at the AC unit and it met the code. The city approved it because that AC unit was to the to the code. So now, what happens when those residents come and say, hey, since it was approved and it was to a city code that that AC unit be connected to an upper floor, then do we fix that entire development's AC units? Because their children can't sleep in those rooms. They can't use their full square footage. At what extent do we continue to honor or keep, not even honoring, we fix remedies from situations where there were no violations or no mistakes made? The other thing that I want to discuss was when I actually went with Councilmember Orlemans to listen with an audiologist to find out the difference, and it was, I could not tell the difference. It was very slight, I will say. It was very slight, but it wasn't a big difference. This is not to say the Dashes and his family are not suffering from fumes or anything else. But my look at this is when we set a precedence in our city. Because if in a year from now, someone comes and says, hey, this fell below, in my opinion, a standard, even though every of all the studies were saying that it meets the standard, then I think that that would be something we will have to approve because we set a precedence. For one resident, we now will do it for all residents. So that's the extent of mine beyond, I'll copy and paste everything else Councilman Orlemans said.
The hundred grand we spent at Deer Ridge, was that a mistake? I mean, I think we just approved, we wanted to help. It wasn't a mistake. We just wanted to help. It's what we do. So I guess it's kind of the same as we take each project one by one. We took Deer Ridge and we decided we wanted to help. If you all don't want to help, just say that. You don't want to help. End of story. I want to help. Susanna just said she wants to help, and we'll go from there. I mean, I just want to know what, what, when do you decide to help? When someone comes and says help, when do you guys decide? Who's good enough to get your help?
Is that a question directed to me?
No, it's actually rhetorical. I'm good.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. Is there a way that we could have the list of the CIP projects placed up on? I know that there's a lot of focus on one project, but we do want to make a decision on which projects do move forward with funding.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, could we also address Karen Berry's question about that $6 million grant?
Certainly.
I can give a brief answer on that. We did look into that Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, and we're not yet eligible to apply. One of the requirements is that we have to have an adopted project, and we have already undergone the environmental work. They want to make sure as they make those grants and loans that they have sufficient shovel readiness, and we're not quite there yet. So as Bruce mentioned earlier, we have a Parks and Recreation Recommendation of a Conceptual Plan. We still need council to buy into that and then to begin a laborious environmental review process of several months before we might even be eligible. And I believe the timeframe for that grant was just recently, so it would be next year that we could apply for. And depending on the timing of that project and when we phase things, there could be future phases that could be eligible for that grant as well. We would definitely pursue that if available.
Thank you. Maybe we could also explain to the guests in the chambers that we're still finishing up the one meeting before we start the other.
Yes, for those that are just coming in, we are wrapping up a CIP budget workshop. I know that normally the city council starts at seven o'clock. We are going to be a few minutes past that. We are a few minutes past that. We're going to wrap up the CIP workshop and adjourn for a few minutes and then come back for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Other than the the sound wall discussion, are there any other of these projects that there are concerns with the timing and the funding for at this time?
I'm not right now. I think that we can approve it, and I think, you know, once we do the CIP, the rate study, we can go through each project and understand that, see if there's any opportunity there. I think the sports complex, there's a lot of opportunity there. When I went through all of the line items, I have an Excel sheet, if you all like it. But I think there's a lot of opportunity there to reduce the cost for Phase One and get it going and get the kids on it as soon as possible, but I'm fine with the list as is. And we know, like we talked about, some of them we have to wait on, like Brentwood Boulevard, but I think it's still important to have on the list so that we don't lose sight of, lose sight of it.
Okay, Dan?
I was just going to invite Sona to make it a little bit larger, so the I was just going to invite Susanna to make it a little bit larger so the public can actually see it a little bit better. Thank you. Thanks.
I think that there was a great suggestion in the packet outside of the other discussion that was presented on financing for the sports complex, specifically the idea of the, and I don't know if this, if we can potentially make a motion. One is, I like the idea of repurposing the economic development funds, I think it was like 1.8, repurposing economic funds. The, sorry.
Do you think we should have a total amount before we start reassigning funds? Or we can?
I wasn't quite done.
Yeah, but I think that maybe having all of the items done, while you're looking for your stuff, while we have all the items done, then we can figure out, do we need to take money from any other entity? Like taking money now and earmarking it, when we might not need it, might not, I don't know. I think we can kind of wait till we go through the line items and see what we really need.
Okay. So I like the idea that we utilize the 1.6 million from the tech center, the returns of 389K from the bond, and then repurposing the bond refinance savings. There was another suggestion that was given that I liked, that we can use policy, Council and Administrative Policy Number 10-5, which was Resolution Number 2001-70, to do inter-fund loans. And the suggestion was that we take from the 1.8 that we have in the economic development fund. Tim, you can probably tell us more about what that fund is about. Borrowing from it if we need it, if we don't, we can pay it back, so it'll be there, and that way there is a little security and known, we can move forward with the sports complex instead of kind of moving forward without knowing how we'll fund it, we'll know that we have the funding there. So tonight, that's my intention, is to make a motion that we move forward with those. For, three, the general fund from tech center, bond repurposing, and the refinance of the savings, and the Parks and Trails impact fee, in addition to using this inner fund loans policy that we can use to take from the economic development funds that we've been trying to get rid of, I think it's like 1.8, and use a portion of it to supplement. If we don't use it, to return those funds to their funding source.
I think part of the reason I don't want to do the economic development one is because I know it makes us attractive to businesses, that we can use in investing when businesses want to come, especially for PA1. So I think we were given options without having to touch the economic development. If we're serious about bringing business, that's not an area I would touch right now. So, I mean, they gave us the general funds, the bond proceeds, the bond refinance savings, the parks and trails. Also, we have the money, I know Carrie, from the money that got front-loaded for stabilization, which was like 600,000, that was supposed to be in this year, but because of the timing of the housing, it just came in a year early. So we could take 600 grand from that, because that was supposed to be here for this year anyway. So I'm not, at this point, I don't think we need the economic development, and I'd rather have that to start creating businesses and bringing in jobs and bringing in tax revenue.
And back to the economic development, even taking that out, I think what we were presenting was a proposal to use general fund money. It's not anything that's in place, so at least of those four, to get a motion for those.
So the ones that are up on the screen?
Yes, those four. And then the, because we are getting close to the 20 million. Tim, could you talk more about the economic development funds, the course of history on that, and why they are not as attractive to businesses?
We, one, are very grateful to have that incentive available, and we have been marketing it in multiple ways, to different vendors, different businesses, different firms. One of the challenges is that as we give any contribution of even a dollar, it triggers prevailing wages for that private entity and typically raises their costs by 25% to 30%. So, we've been in really close negotiations with several different prospects, and in both cases, we said, okay, if we take a million from the city to come to Brentwood, now we have to spend three or four million more dollars of our own money to finish paying prevailing wages. So, it's been difficult negotiating a deal to give them money because of the triggering of additional costs for them. So, I think there is a little bit of room for it. I think there's also been some good points about, you may not need to commit all of that, or even some of it at this point. If you approve these four funding sources as recommended, you're pretty close to what the estimated budget is. As we, say, if we get authorization on the project and we put out a bid, we come back, and if we're short on some funds, that's another opportunity where you can certainly allocate additional funds if needed. But if you allocate it now, we would just hold that in reserve and not spend it on incentive monies, and then see what the actual costs come in. As Bruce mentioned, it's very difficult to predict on cost estimates of things. It could be more, it could be less, as we saw, sound walls less, sports complexes more. We do our best to estimate, and until we get an actual bid in, it's hard to say.
Okay. Then can I make a motion to accept all of the items on our CIP list, including using these funds for the sports complex? And if any of them need to go back, then we can push them back, also being open-minded to the stabilization funds if we see that that's a better use of funds than the parks and trails and all of that.
I'll second.
Okay, just clarifying what is on the floor. This means that we will be addressing this at the council level for approval from this workshop at some point.
So a couple of things.
Okay.
You can certainly allocate funds towards a project that you have not yet approved and will yet be considering in fullness, including the line item details as mentioned that you want to look at. That doesn't hurt to allocate funds now and then figure out what the project looks like, and then you could do it in reverse as well. If you go ahead with that motion, that would focus on the sports complex, and that gives us some direction initially. Then we want to get some direction. If there's any other CIPs that you want to discuss, make changes to, discuss further, we can certainly address those as well, piecemeal, as needed. And then again, what we're looking for tonight is just any other direction you want to give us. So when we come back, I believe it's June 27th?
June 13th.
June 13th.
Final adoption.
Then we'll have a CIP book for you to approve, and then we're off and running.
Well, we go, that's the same day we're doing the rate study, right? So that's perfect, yeah.
The motion was not specifically what you just stated, it was to include all CIP projects, not just as to the sound wall and to these funds. And I was previously making a motion to discuss just the funds specifically.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure we don't have any issues with too many motions too quickly, slow things down a little bit, make sure we have complete understanding from all council members on what the motion is, what a second is, make sure there's no further discussion before we proceed to vote. So, we may need to clarify what, who made a motion first, and I don't know if the city clerk has record that we can maybe clarify before we get too far down this road.
I think I'm the first one that said I'm making a motion.
Let's see what the city clerk has on the floor.
I heard the motion first from Councilmember Mendoza, but I don't know if I missed a motion.
Why don't we start there? Mayor, it's your meeting, but Councilmember Mendoza, if you could clarify your motion, that way everyone's crystal clear.
My motion is to accept all of the items on the CIP, knowing that we're going to discuss all of the rate study items, so that we understand everything that's going in there, and is there any opportunity? We're going to do line by line on the park to see if there's any opportunity there, and considering those funds to use for the park.
And that was my understanding for the second.
And just so my notes are clear, the funds are the four listed funds on the slide staff had. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Could I get a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlemans?
No.
Councilmember Pearson?
No.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Motion carries, 3-2.
Okay, this time, with the vote moving staff's recommendation forward, I need a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn the CIP special meeting?
I second that motion.
First and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.
Mayor, can we have a five-minute recess?
If it's permissible with council, a 10-minute recess start at 7:30? Is that too long? Is, just trying to make sure everyone is... Okay, five minutes. Okay, five-minute recess.
I'm not going to say a lot, I'm going to let the proclamation speak. But Fred, I have known Fred for many years now. When I first moved to town, he was working at the press. And anytime I walked downtown, it seemed that he was there. And then I found out that he was involved in so many other areas in the community. And when I got to be a part of the very first youth in government, that I got to attend as a councilperson, found out that it was Fred's brainchild and baby. And he ushered it into fruition and let us have what we have now. And he's also a lion. And from a personal note, Fred is one of the most genuine precious individuals that I've ever met. He loves people and he serves people. And he wants not just a community, but every individual in that community to have a happy, prosperous, and peaceful life. And he does that, and he shows it by the way he lives his life. And it is my honor to call you my friend. And I'm going to read a proclamation. And I'm going to allow the vice mayor, after the proclamation, to speak as well. You know, why don't you speak before the proclamation? So we can gather ourselves.
So I've, ooh, that's loud. I've known lion Fred for quite a few years too. We met when I was working at the press with him and bonded over Friday afternoon margaritas. After hours, of course, and nobody drove home, and seriously. But Fred, press was a very interesting place to work. And there was always a lot of ups and downs and interesting news happening and lots of personalities and drama. And Fred was a very entertaining way to get through that with some grace and some peace and some chuckles too. So I'll never forget that part of you. And then got reintroduced to you as a Brentwood Lion, as my husband and I are now Brentwood Lions as well. So feel incredibly lucky to have re-entered your universe and become a part of your world again, lion Fred. And I continue to be inspired by you and the work that you do and your presence in the community and all the things that you've done that nobody really knows about, all the things that we aren't talking about tonight. We honor you tonight for all of that. Thank you.
Whereas in 2003, Fred Gensler moved to the city of Brentwood, immediately immersed himself in the community and joined the Brentwood Lions Club. And whereas in 2004, Brentwood co-chaired the first youth in government program and the first diabetes awareness walk in Brentwood. And whereas from 2011 through 2013, Fred served as the president of the Lions Club. And whereas in 2015, Fred was awarded the recognition of lion of the year, as well as the highest honor from the Lions Club with a progressive Melvin Jones Fellowship. And whereas in 2016, Fred received the second Brentwood Chamber of Commerce's Community Service Award. And whereas over the past 20 years, Fred has participated in dozens of charitable events and has acted as a liaison between the city of Brentwood and the Brentwood Lions Club, supporting various city events. And whereas in April 2023, Fred co-chaired his 14th Youth in Government Program, which has encouraged many students to take an interest in their community and plays a part in developing our future leaders. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Brentwood hereby thanks Fred Gensler for his invaluable contributions to the Brentwood community and his dedication to its youth. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, thank you. Just a few words. 20 years ago, the city council meetings were far different than what we're experiencing tonight. There was no contention about anything. We just, everybody got along. But this is a far more interesting approach to city government. And I really appreciate, I appreciate all of you. You're not getting paid to do this, it's just your love of Brentwood. But other than that, I just don't think I deserve this proclamation. But thank you, thank you all very much. Thank you. If we can move over here and make sure we get some photographs. Now if the Lions would like to come, any that would? These are on consent, so I have to go back up here to do A2. So at this time, I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Brian Helmick, who is no stranger to this room or this community, to present an update from the Contra Costa Fire District as part of the presentation. Chief Helmick.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. It's really good to come back home. I was giving everyone up there a hard time, or especially your staff. I didn't understand where my parking spot is gone. And my office, my office was locked, so I don't understand what's happening here tonight. But no, we did a lot of good work in this room and it feels really good to be here tonight. So for those of you that don't know me, my name is Brian Helmick. I am the deputy chief of the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District. And previously, for those of you that don't know me, I had the great privilege and honor to serve as the fire chief for the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District that annexed into the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District on July 1 of 2022. And so prior to getting into the updates, tonight is very celebratory. And I'm going to use the word "we." There's much that we should celebrate. That comes from the citizens, that comes from the Brentwood City Council, that comes from the previous board of the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District, and to not only the firefighters, and again, the community itself. That we conquered a lot and we did much, but we still have much more work to do to advance fire protection services in the far eastern Contra Costa County, which is the city of Brentwood. Tonight, I'm going to be celebrating and sharing with you not only what we've done over the time since we've annexed, but also what we plan to do as we advance into the future. What I will tell you is that although I no longer serve specifically as the East Contra Costa Fire Chief, I've been very clear and open that I continue to be an advocate. I am a resident of the city of Brentwood proudly. And I will continue to advocate and the chief, Chief Rashard, I'm here on his behalf. But it is his goal to ensure that everything that we work to do, establish to do, to increase service levels, make them adequate today and also into the future, that we continue to strive to do that daily. But the amount of work that has been done with the fire district and how much movement that we have made over the very short amount of time, it hasn't even been a year. It seems like a lot longer than a year in some ways, but it hasn't even been a year. There's a lot to celebrate and that's what I want to share with you tonight. Those of you that didn't know, the previous fire district that served at three fire stations. We covered 250 square miles. And today, the fire district is different. And as we move forward, the way it's going to happen is one of the deliverables that is, that needs to be known for the council specifically, is that we as Contra Costa County Fire, this is one of the struggles and the challenges we've had in transition, specifically with everywhere that East Contra Costa Fire previously served, is that we only had two cities in the unincorporated areas of Brentwood. Now we have 12 cities. We cover 12 different cities, 750,000 residents, we run 100,000 calls a year. And so providing updates to town councils, to CSDs, to city councils has become a lot more difficult in regards to bandwidth to be successful in doing that. So I will be providing you, excuse me, two updates per year. And this is going to be the first one. And so it's great to be able to educate you on your new district, your new department, Contra Costa County Fire. And we are an all-risk fire department. We provide fire rescue EMS, ambulance services. We are one of the largest fire districts in the state of California. We are the 12th largest fire district in the state of California. We're considered to be a metropolitan fire agency. And what we do is we are dedicated to preserving live property in the environment and obviously service and how we do it is of utmost importance. Your fire department is 500-plus strong. Firefighters are about 407 firefighters we have within our force. We just graduated Academy 59 last week. We are 470, 407 firefighters deep. We are about to approach the 600 employee mark for sworn and unworn. We now have 33 fire stations. I'll be specific of what you have here in Brentwood and the surrounding communities, but throughout the county. You have 33 fire stations, we have 36 companies, and we have a fleet of 250 different units or resources, and many of which are specialized. You can see the pictures in the screen. We as East Contra Costa Fire previously, it's important to just reflect back, is we had what were considered wildland piece of equipment. We had structural firefighting pieces of equipment. And we had water tenders to shuttle water, that's what we had. Today, we are, you are protected by air, ground, and water. We have two helicopters, we have dozers, we have hand crews. You have the same water tenders, the structural firefighting engines, you have the wildland engines, but you have aerial trucks, as you can see in the bottom with truck six. You have one of those trucks now stationed at the Station 92, which is on Bow 4 and John Muir Parkway. We now have two companies, which I'll hit here in a minute, working out of that one station. But we have the first truck company that has ever been in far east Contra Costa County, ever. And there's a truck company dedicated, so we can now effectively get above anything, above two stories, three stories, and/or greater. We know, this building being one of them, the need was great. We didn't have that resource prior to this. That resource is coming from Pittsburgh, just to put it in perspective. Highway four traffic in the afternoon, imagine needing a truck, it was coming from Pittsburgh. The second one after that was coming from Walnut Creek. We now have one in Brentwood. So we have multiple pieces of equipment on the right-hand side of your screen. We not only have the crews, the dozers, we have a full investigation team. We have a hazardous materials response team. We have canine search and rescue, as I stated, marine. We have a FEMA urban search and rescue for collapses and search. And we also respond nationally with those response teams. And we also respond nationally with those response teams. So all of the pictures you see, those are our resources. Those are the resources that respond on the automatic dispatch to all of us, and that's something very much today to be able to celebrate. To talk a little bit about what's new. What's new in East Contra Costa is there is, in East Contra Costa's area, or East Contra Costa County, I should state, is that we've been able to open multiple stations. And it's important to note that, I'm going to be speaking countywide, is that since June 1 of 2022, we were able to open a station in Walnut Creek, a station in the Pittsburgh area. We opened Station 95 in Bethel Island. We've added an additional company to Station 92, as I just discussed. And we have multiple, as it identifies up on the screen, additional resources that are coming in. The District also did a contract for service with the city of Penole. And so the city of Penole, I'm actually serve as the Contract Chief of the city of Penole. And so Stations 73 and 74 are now Contra Costa County Fire resources. Why is this important? Is we've been strengthening our resources in the depth of our bench to be able to not only mitigate an initial alarm, a first incident, but we can handle multiple greater alarm incidents at any one given time in eastern, central, and/or western Contra Costa County. We have a very deep bench, and obviously if we had an emergency recall, the bench is even greater. So that is something to be able to celebrate. As it states, Battalion 9 is what you would consider in Brentwood, Oakley, Discovery Bay, a portion of Antioch, Marsh Creek, Byron, Morgan Territory. Today, you're now staffed with 19 firefighters. And we've added two additional stations since June 1. And if you don't recall, we had a total of nine firefighters on per day, and now you have 19 firefighters per day serving you. Another great fact is this. We previously, historically, we had only EMTs, which are classified as Emergency Medical Technicians, basic life support. Every one of our piece of equipment now are served the paramedics on those engines. That's something we achieved as the first of last month. So not only do you have a truck company, which is a four-person engine company, all of your engine companies are three-person, one of which is a paramedic, and you have 19 firefighters immediately serving you per day. And then obviously, we span all the way out until Penole, Walnut Creek, and beyond to provide services. It's a great advancement. I want to apologize in advance, we're working to replace these. I want to give you just a snapshot, very Brentwood-specific, but these are the important points, the next three slides I want you to take. You, just looking at the trends. This one is about a detailed look at the city of Brentwood in regards to the response times or types of calls. I'll also be focusing on the types of calls that we run, and then EMS calls specifically. This is what the takeaways you need to know, and anyone, this is available, obviously, online. I have a resource code through a QR code at the end, someone can look at. But this is the takeaways. Our call volume is increasing. Your response times are decreasing. I think that's the biggest thing to be able to state out of everything that you'll see, is that again, the call volume in our area, population continues to increase. Time and distance continues to be a challenge for us. But again, your call volume, although it is high, it is, our response times continue to decrease. And we also anticipate in the next three years to add one additional engine company and build two additional stations. Station 54 downtown Brentwood across from Bank of America. There's going to be a two-story station that is being designed right now. It should be constructed within the next two years, and three years, I'm sorry, and will be staffed. On Grant and Fairview Grant and Amber Lane, behind Pioneer School, the five-acre lot, I thank the city for working with us to secure that property. We're working also to design that building in the exact same time. That truck company is already staffed, working out of the existing fire station. But once that station is built, it will be relocated. And then we're looking to dual staff that station until the station downtown is built. So we're looking within three years, we said five. We thought within five years, we'd be able to get an additional three stations, an additional three companies, but it looks like we maybe will do it in the three to four-year window, which is exciting. But again, we're going to be working next time we come back to you. This will not be the slide you see in regards to our call volume and our trends. But in April, you'll be able to see that the calls that we respond, 80% of what we do is medical aid, 78% to be specific. But we work within our jurisdiction about two to four working, that means fully or partially involved, structured fires every week. So we're very active, and as I stated, we run about 100,000 calls per year. But this is what you'll see within incidents by type, very specific in the month of April 23, 512 in the city of Brentwood. You can see how they're allocated out and what it is, how we're tasked and resourced. In regards to the EMS data, another point to make is that we are not only paramedics on every engine, but now we do all your transport. So we actually are a transporting agency, which means we only, not only provide the paramedics on the engines, but we also provide the ambulances, and we manage and monitor all of those. And so that is a new resource that you have. Now, looking forward, and what's coming up with current events, and we're working towards conclusion here, is the wildfire threat. We are very much focused on wildland fire mitigation. As you will see in the next slide that I'll be showing you, will be very specific to Brentwood. But this is the deal, with all of the water, the rain, the vegetation, and the growth, we anticipate to have a very active fire season once again. We do, and we work with our citizens, with fire-wise communities. We're working with people in Marsh Street, Morgan Territory, and throughout our jurisdiction. But we are asking everyone that is listening or watching, and we do appreciate the city and how proactive that you are in regards to wildland and vegetation management. We need everyone to be proactive to protect their homes and to ensure that you do everything to minimize to have enough call and be able to come out to you. But the Fire District itself has a wealth of information to be able to come alongside your citizens, to be able to help them prepare their homes and their properties, and all of that information is available in our website. But as we transition into this fire season, there's also wildfire severity maps that we're working on. This is a map of your city, the city of Brentwood. Within the city limits, you have fire threat in regards to individual properties and transfer from one property to the next with fuel loads, that's very real. But your wildfire threat is minimal within the city. But we do on the southern end of the city, out towards Marsh Creek Road, that is where we consider to be a considerable threat. And so we are working to, and we are working with not only the state parks, East Bay regional parks, and the property owners in that area, to be proactive. We have dozers out there cutting in line, and we're working on wildfire mitigation and hazard abatement now. But there's a QR code that's available for anyone that looks at this presentation. And we have live threat maps that have heat zones, threat zones, and is very interactive to be able to continue to work and educate our citizens. The last thing I want to give is this, and we're asking all citizens and residents. We have a new, it's called Zone Haven. It's a new tool, and we're asking for everyone to register into an evacuation zone and tool. It's called Zone Haven. There will be a QR code on the next slide that was a reference for you to go into, that will provide you access to all these resources. We have, as the Fire District, and I thank the Brentwood Police Department, working with us to create evacuation zones all the way throughout your city. And it is also attached to and works with the County Community Warning System. And so when and if we need to evacuate for any risk, whatever may be, from fire, hazardous materials, to vegetation, to residential or otherwise, we can immediately just get on the radio, let them know when we need to evacuate, or send a warning to zone, whatever it may be. And you will be notified through the phone, through the reverse 911 system, immediately through the Contra Costa County Community Warning System. But it's important that our residents, the elected officials, and all members of the city are actively engaged. And so we ask for everyone to sign up for Zone Haven. Lastly, as I stated, is that we have a lot of resources at Confire. And are, we have the resources to be able to come alongside the residents of Contra Costa County to be able to educate and to support and advocate for them to make sure that they have a safe home, that they close their doors at night when they sleep, that prepare your home while you're away, and to prepare an evacuation plan if so you were needed, to be proactive and preventative. And so we ask for you to lean into us, let us know if we can help you. But everything is available at the District's website. That QR code that's on the screen, if one were to use their phone and to go take a picture, it would link them to all of the resources I've discussed here tonight. And it would give you also contact information to contact the District. I myself, as I always stay, as I'm always readily available, and my email address, phone number, otherwise, are also accessible if anyone has any questions from the citizens and/or obviously any of the elected officials. To conclude, and I know I run a little long here tonight. It is going to be forward-thinking, giving updates as we move forward. It's not going to be reflecting back to the previous East Contra Costa Fire District, so I do appreciate your grace with that tonight. I think it was timely and relevant. But again, personally, to the city council of Brentwood and to your staff, the annexation and what we did as a Fire District would not have been achievable if we didn't collaborate and if we didn't, we weren't innovative. We all sacrificed a little bit, but we all gained much. And so it was a great privilege and honor to serve you in that capacity. But now, as the Deputy Fire Chief of Contra Costa County Fire, I'm looking forward to resolving and doing everything we say that we do in those resolutions to get the additional two stations built and to get them staffed to make sure it's sustainable. And that we mitigate and take care of growth responsibly, not with you as a city, right? As the city continues to grow, that we equally lean into and manage growth effectively to provide the safest community we can for our residents. So I'm eternally grateful to you and your staff, and I'm available for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions with the chief?
I don't have questions, but I want to say thank you for everything. I know it's been a lot of work, and I really appreciate it. And I know the people of Brentwood appreciate it because it was a bumpy road there for a little bit. I think the deck is great. So to staff, I would only ask if we could place it on our website with those, with the QR codes or the links to get people to download the app and get more exposure to the work that they're doing, I think would be helpful also.
Maybe in the newsletter as well.
Oh yeah, the newsletter.
And welcome back to City Council. It's great to see you. It's unusual not seeing you around town.
I agree.
Yeah. But thank you for all the world, the work, the years of work to get us where we are today, because we do hear from the community that things are much better. The responses are faster, they're feeling safer. And a lot went into it. I know previous councils did a lot of work to get us where we are and knew where you are. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Before you go, chief, I'm going to do my very best to see fire engine red on your face. I know that this is not something you're going to be comfortable with. But for the community that is not aware, the consolidation success that we've had consolidating East Contra Costa Fire Protection District to Contra Costa Fire Protection District could not have and would not have happened without the sacrifice of Chief Brian Helmick. I had the privilege of serving with him on the fire board for many years and had the privilege of being one of the body that elected him and hired him as the Fire Chief. And it was one of the greatest decisions I've ever had an opportunity to be a part of. Just so you will know, there are very few people that are willing to hand over the reins and step away from a goal that was a life goal of becoming a Fire Chief and take a subordinate role in a larger body of first responders simply because it was safer for their community. It was safer for the families that they served. And Chief Brian Helmick did that. That is something that I hope to see at least maybe one more time in my life, someone willing to sacrifice to that degree on a personal level. But having been able to see it once is probably more than most people ever get to see. Chief Helmick, thank you very much for your service, your integrity, your sacrifice for our community, and your love for our families.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And thank you for your report. At this time, we are going to open public comments. I'm going to ask Margaret if we can get a number. And as she's coming up with a number of commenters, I'm simply going to ask this. If all of the speakers could show respect to each other in this room, respect every single individual that comes to the podium, and give them your ear and your respect, that would be greatly appreciated. There's not a single person in this community that doesn't deserve all of our respect just because they're a person, they're human. And so if we could show that respect to each other, just in public comments to each other in the room, that would be greatly appreciated.
I have 12 speaker cards. I don't have any hands raised in Zoom yet.
Okay. I anticipate there's going to be a lot more speakers. So with that anticipation for this item, I'm going to set the speaker timer to three minutes instead of five, because I anticipate there being a significant amount of public comment on this. So at this time, we're going to open public comment, and I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
We'll take public comments in the chambers, followed by Zoom. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. At this time, the public is permitted to address City Council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar. Requests for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I did receive written public comments for consent item C4 that were submitted prior to the meeting. This is shown on the screen, and they have been posted on the city's website. While we encourage state, your comments, state law prevents the City Council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up with you directly. My first speaker card is Rod, followed by Holly Bishop.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to save my prepared speech for later. And I'll just comment a little bit more on the sound wall. I'm not sure what audiologist, council member, or lemons visits, but 3 dB is a doubling of sound pressure and a 23% increase in volume. It's audible. You can just, all you have to do is go Google the 3 dB rule. It's like reference after reference after reference after reference after reference after reference. You will see them. I can't imagine what his audiologist must have been thinking, telling him that it's only, it's not perceptible, but it's just not true. The item that Pearson is, excuse me, I heard that. The item that Pearson brought up. You're not allowed to speak to me, sir. You're speaking to me right now, you're not allowed to. And we're getting to that in my future comments. For now, we're talking about the sound wall. Pearson, Mr. Mayor, this man is speaking to me, and he's not allowed at this point in time. Will you, will you gavel order? Or will you at least speak to him and tell him not to talk anymore? Thank you, sir. The portion of the disclosures that Dash showed you had made reference to construction on the freeway, not the freeway sound itself. And I'm sure other people will speak to that, but you're mistaken in that anybody was telling them that the actual sound of the road was going to be the issue. It was the construction, the future construction. And there was a mention in there of a future sound wall, which has not appeared for Mr. Dash. So Mr. Dash is here tonight in great discomfort. He was in an automobile accident 10 days ago. He has a broken collarbone, I believe, so, but this is important to him. And I know that there's going to be people here speaking against this tonight, and it's interesting to see, but the fact is, the facts are what they are. They've been stated over and over again. I think Karen Rary gave the best review I can imagine. And yeah, as far as Mr. Orlemans conduct tonight, he has just hardened my resolve to make my future comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Holly Bishop, followed by Anketh Benzel.
Good evening. I want to first speak about the sound wall. I've had many people come up to me upset, and they don't want their tax dollars spent there. I let some Brentwood friends know I was speaking tonight, and I received 12 letters in opposition. I let some Brentwood friends know I was speaking tonight and I received 12 letters in opposition. Here are a couple of reasons for the opposition. One, the individual who purchased the home was informed about the noise. Specifically in his contract, he shared, it states, and I quote, "Nuisances associated with State Route 4 bypass and/or the construction of future improvements may include, but not limited to, noise." It goes on, but then states, "May be noticeable at all hours of the day and night. Such impacts could disrupt sleep and disrupt the quiet enjoyment of the buyer's home." Two, the sound wall study also shows the sound wall isn't going to improve the issue but 3 dB, as read in the agenda, which many council members stress on reading. I find it interesting that it reads, "It is not recommended as the human ear will not recognize the 3 dB improvement. In comparison, a PIN, that's P-I-N, dropping has a decibel of 15." I also want to bring up another topic. Mayor Bryant, you had a beautiful heartfelt speech about people fighting for the freedom of speech. But we are coming to a time when the freedom is taken for granted. Now, I'm not just saying this about Brentwood, but as a nation. I bet if you asked those people who fought for our freedom if they thought it was okay to disrespect someone or their family, to sit and taunt them time and time again, they would tell you that is not what they fought for. They fought for a greater freedom and this very right has become an abusive power where the bad guy has more rights than the good guy. Integrity and respect has gone out the door. Mayor Bryant, we are looking to you to do something and set an example. Show the people we can make it known that downright disrespect isn't going to be tolerated here in Brentwood. I'm sure you taught your kid, just like I taught mine, that if someone is being bullied, you stand up for them, you don't turn the other cheek. Mayor Bryant, we are pleading to you to stop the disrespect. People can get their point across without name-calling and threats. Most people in Brentwood aren't here speaking. Why? Because we elected people to do this for us, to represent us. But some people think it's okay to call and disrespect those people or some people on the dais feel that they need to recruit others to attack. And that's not right. Stop the mockery. Yes, people fought for our freedom, but it doesn't look like this. Finally, since I'm here, you know I have to say something about the water. EPA safe level is .02 parts per billion, but our wells are close to nine parts per billion. I'm asking council to again test for chromium 6 separately and give it to the citizens on the yearly water quality report. That only costs maybe a couple hundred dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anketh Benzel, followed by Danny Dorman.
Dear Mayor and council members, namaste. I am honored to invite you all to the upcoming Guru Mandana event, a teacher deposition. It's an event organized by Hindu Samaswak Sangh, a Brentwood chapter, to express our gratitude and appreciation towards our esteemed teachers. As you may know, the teachers holds a special place of respect and reverence in Hindu culture. Hindu Samaswak Sangh, also known as HSS, is a nonprofit socio-cultural Hindu organizations with over 235 chapters in 164 cities and 34 states. HSS Brentwood fosters a sense of selfless service, civic duty, caring responsibility, volunteerism through service activities and outreach projects such as food donation drive during the festival of Diwali, a health for humanity yoga than, and a backpack drive for the local students, to name a few. In tradition, in our tradition, the teacher is considered a guide, a mentor, and even a god. They are the ones who ignite the light of knowledge within us and shape our character, morals, and values. They inspire us to become better individuals and contribute positively towards society. With this in mind, it is important for us to take a moment to recognize and express our gratitude towards these unsung heroes who play such a vital roles in our lives. The Guru Mandana event or a teacher deposition is a platform for us to do just that. It is an opportunity for us to come together as a community, celebrate the individual contributions for our teachers and express our heartfelt gratitude towards them. We are pleased to inform you that we visited the public hearing earlier this year to receive a proclamation for the sun salutation yoga. We thank you for your support and encouragement. So I invite you all to join us in the celebration and show your support to our teachers. It will be an event with music, cultural performances, and hurtful expressions of gratitude towards our teachers. This event will be held in Ronan Elementary on Saturday 20th of May from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The invitation email and additional information was emailed earlier in the day. Please RSVP as possible, I mean as early as possible you can. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dorman.
Here we go. You, sir, demonstrated that you are a menace. Not because you disrespected the mayor by your childish accusations.
I, I understand. You don't understand anything. I'm disgusted. And you're going to sit here and look me in the face and tell me, oh, it was a mistake. That's garbage. That is garbage.
Not because you acted like a pituitary child who, not getting his way, stormed out in a hissy fit.
Can we have a break for just a couple of minutes? That's the stupidest thing I've ever heard in my life.
No, you're a menace because you could have just as easily come back with your weapon and take matters into your own hands. And before anyone starts shaking their head in disbelief, I'll refer to the average of every day this year, there's been an active shooting event. As an ex-cop, you more than likely carry a weapon. Plus the fact you left. Who the heck knows what you could have come back with? I was here. I don't scare easy, but damn it, I was scared that night. If this were a workplace, your actions would have resulted in your immediate. Oh, go ahead. You can say all you want, partner. I'm all day. You can cough. Your immediate actions would have resulted in your dismissal. For those who didn't witness it, I was going to play the highlight, but I only have a minute 10 seconds and it's a minute. And what's worse is the amount of support you receive from the community. You, sir, are a menace. But you can't be fired. There are only three options. You'll resign, which I know you won't. You'll be recalled, which is too expensive. You are censured. I was advised not to suggest resignation because you won't. Plus your cohort, in dismantling everything this previous council did, won't like it. You are a menace. And I really don't understand why you two didn't even stand up for the proclamation? I stood up. I didn't know who the guy was. I don't even know what the Lions Club is. But out of respect, I stood up. You guys, I mean, I, it was in disbelief. And boy, I really wish I can go back to the name-calling because you'd be Temple Planted Tony and you'd be Marjorie.
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Ramanam Mahalanam. And I apologize if I butchered your name, followed by Shivangi Dash.
Hey, thank you once again for giving this opportunity to share our concern in this meeting. I am Ramanam Mahalanam. I have been living in the Sienna Committee. And I'm here today to talk about the Concern 4, which is the Sound Wall Project. And I was here last week as well, hoping that that's the last time we'll be discussing about the project. And unfortunately, we need to discuss about it once again as some of our respectable council members was having, were looking for some clarification. And I hope they got that, whether the decimal will really result in some improvement or not. And also, I would like to make it very clear that it's not just two houses that was impacted. And it was the entire Sienna Committee has been impacted by, because of the sound issue. And I hope the City Council would have understood this by now, based on the number of responses you are getting from the citizens and via different channels like email, in person, as well as via Zoom meetings. And moreover, based on my discussion with the neighborhood and others, I came to know this is not just an issue that started recently and it has been going on for years. And almost it was bringing to a closure, not because it was discussed for many years, because it was accepted as an issue by the people who are part of the search team and people who are in person to see whether it's a real issue. So I understand that some good things will take time, but ultimately it shouldn't be taking too much of time to put it in process. And with that being said, finally, I'm looking forward for respectable mayor and vice mayor, as well as the city council members to approve this so that I can go back and say that, okay, this is all done and we can sleep peacefully. And thank you once again for my time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shivangi Dash, followed by Sukumar Dash.
Good evening, all. I'm here yet again to represent not just one voice that is mine, like it's being said by some individual over here. I'm representing the entire Sienna community that is being affected by the whole growing cacophonous noise pollution in our community. So as the population is growing, it is affecting us. And how? Because recently, my husband met with an auto accident and he has been trying to get some peace, which unfortunately he is not getting because he is being affected with all the growing noise. We get up in the middle of the night. It is easy for some council members to say, oh, it's not affecting. But I'm inviting them that please come and you can even spend the whole night at our house and see how pleasantly comfortable it is to stay with the whole vehicles going in and out and with the big rigs and all sort of vehicles. So to say flagrantly that, no, it's not affecting, is just plain ignorance on their part because last council meeting was nothing, but it was plain embarrassing. Being a mother and a teacher, that kind of behavior would have led to timeout or being disciplined. So it is quite a mockery of the whole system going on right now. We have been coming here on and off. My husband did not give up this fight, this battle, not for himself, not for the selfish interest. It is for the whole community. He has been speaking out to each of the council members. We have been nothing but very civil, very patient, and timelessly we have always, always cooperated with each one of the council members, the vice mayor, everyone. Everyone was involved in this project. I don't know why it is hanging by the thread. Why do we have to keep coming again and again and give our facts, figures, everything which my husband and the whole community has been tirelessly, day and night, they have been working to get all the facts and figures to be thwarted by baseless argument, which has no, no base in it, by some of the council members is quite, like a deplorable thing to go on and on. Only I would like to end this argument once and for all, that we need some peace and is it too much to ask for? Do we have to really bargain for this kind of sacrificial thing that we are being paid of staying in the Sienna community? You do the sound wall study in some other community, Somerset, and you say, oh, that applies for the Sienna community. The wall is clearly dropping. Our house can clearly see there's the, everything you can see, the speed limit sign. Even our guests, when they come in, they can see it. It is, it is so funny, but it is so painful to our ears. So to say that, oh, that's nothing, that's not of a big deal, is quite ignorant and quite senseless on the part that you are showing that you have no sense for us or for our life, together for our children. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sukumar Dash, followed by Antonio Xavier.
Good evening, council members. Before I go, I just want to clarify one of the statements from Holly, just on disclosure agreement. And I have this disclosure agreement in front of me. She just read one line that this will impact the day and night, but that was in connection with the construction. The whole disclosure agreement states that during construction, we will be having an impact on noise and light work in the day and night. But she never read even the next line, which says clearly, "Future improvements to the State Highway 4 bypass could involve the construction of newer additional sound wall near the community." So she never told. So that was totally a false statement. Okay, let me go back to my agenda. The discussion on fixing the sound wall at Sienna property has been going on for the last five years. And many things have been looked into it with a lot of details from various agencies, state assembly members, state senator office, before it was listed in the line item approved by all the council members in 2022. No one ever dreamed that the expansion of highway bypass will bring so much pain and inconvenience to one community. But we all are human beings and learn from our mistakes. For some reason, the sound wall height had a miscalculation and was built into 2006 when the community was not present. The Sienna community was not developed with the same due diligence and high standard that Brentwood normally provides for other residential areas. It never followed the Brentwood General Noise Plan N-1-1 that ensures noise compatibility of existing and future development when making land use planning decision. The area was originally zoned as a light industrial and then later rezoned to residential community. Here are the key facts. From 2006 Sienna sound study to Tri Delta Transit Meeting on November 13, 2014, by Highway 4 Bypass Authority. The Sienna community is located closer to Route 4 than any other residential community in Brentwood. There is no proper zone to help reduce the noise as per the mitigation plan from State Highway Authority. The noise study that was done in Somerset to pass the Highway 4 bypass project with Caltrain. The sound wall is the only mitigation option. The Sienna committee has the shortest sound wall in Brentwood along the Route 4 corridor. The disclosure document with a builder clearly states that the current sound wall will be extended after the Highway 4 bypass project is completed. State Assembly Jim Fraser Office in 2019 had investigated this issue for six months with Caltrain before an email was sent. That is the responsibility of the city to address the issue, not the responsibility of the state. And State Assembly Glazer Office also looked at the same facts and conclusion was the same. And the noise study that was released on October 11, 2019.
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Antonio Xavier, followed by Shawna White.
Councilmember Orlemans and Pearson, your honeymoon period is clearly over. I am no longer giving you the benefit of the doubt after watching what you tried to do during that earlier workshop meeting. You intentionally maneuvered an item from a vote during the previous council session to a 5:30 PM special workshop. You attempted to kill a project by doing an end-around to pull the funding from it. And you did that during a 5:30 PM workshop before all these residents who intended to speak tonight could come here and speak for themselves. I am absolutely disgusted with that behavior. On February 7 of this year, the council held a workshop for behavior of the city council. Some points of emphasis from that workshop, be civil and respectful, attack the problem, not the person. The newest members of this council went out of their way during that workshop to criticize how the previous council conducted business and contrast that with the changes they could bring regarding conflict resolution. Have you gone back and reviewed your comments from that session? Some of them have aged like milk. Let's go over some of those statements, referring how the prior council operated. There were times there was not healthy argument or dialogue. It was nasty and it spilled over into the people in the seats and the community. Regarding how they would deal with disagreements. I'm assuming I'm going to disagree with each and every one of you and I don't have a problem talking. We just have to be respectful when we do that and allow others to speak and finish sentences without cutting them off. Now let's talk about the elephant in the room. We all know what happened during that last council session. We heard a recording earlier. Let me repeat some of the phrases. You don't understand anything. I'm disgusted. That's garbage. That's the stupidest thing I ever heard. That's pathetic. That's the most pathetic thing I've ever heard in my entire life. That's the stupidest thing I've heard in my entire life. And nothing but uncomfortable and awkward silence followed before a call to recess. Since that outburst occurred, I am not aware of any formal admonishment for using any of those terms in a disrespectful and angry manner towards the rest of the council. I am not aware of any public apology for the outburst and breach of decorum in these chambers. Is this chamber still governed by rules and regulations? Or should we expect more chaos in the future? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shawna White, followed by Clifton Vagerquist.
Good evening, council members. My name is Shawna White. I moved to the Sienna community in March 2017. Shortly after, a few months later, construction was started on Highway 4. Since then, my life has changed. I am a registered nurse. I am awakened at night, early morning, due to the highway noise from big rigs, motor I am awakened at night, early morning, due to the highway noise from big rigs, motorcycles, revving. When it rains, the noise is more palpable. This project has been approved. It's been on the, we've been fighting this issue for six years now. We cannot, also, we cannot compare the noise pollution on Bow Four to Highway Four. How can we compare? How can we compare that? I just don't understand. As I said before, this project has already been funded. It came under budget. I'm asking council members if you guys can please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Clifton Fagerquist, followed by Laura Avila.
So, as you know, I'm a Deer Ridge resident, and my house, my home backs up to the closed golf course. What you may not, what you may or may not know is that the weeds on the closed golf course are now over five feet tall. This now presents a fire hazard to Deer Ridge homes and residents, not that World Business Academy or Suncoast care in the least. World Business Academy, which is run by the brother of Suncoast, is now negligent in his responsibilities to periodically cut the weeds on the closed golf course to mitigate fire hazards. In the past, the city fined World Business Academy and Suncoast for the overgrown weeds and slightly orange K rail barriers on the golf course. The total fines amounted to over $40,000. However, the city waived these fines when World Business Academy-Suncoast hired a combative attorney to ruthlessly cross-examine city staff, suggesting that they were in some way biased in discharging their duties. By now, everyone in the city government should realize that World Business Academy-Suncoast are coldly calculating attorneys. Because the city would not go along with their rezone and other ridiculous WBA proposals, they refused to maintain even the minimum amount of weed debatement. No doubt, they are once again pleading poverty. How many times have we heard that excuse from WBA and Suncoast? And now, World Business Academy, a supposed nonprofit under California law, has sold the clubhouse and surrounding land for an undisclosed price to a local businessman, who intends to establish a restaurant that sells alcohol in the middle of the residential area and just blocks from Cray Elementary School. Question, who in the city government, who in the city government discussed this restaurant proposal with Sean McCauley or with a realtor who brokered the deal? Why are the Deer Ridge residents once again being confronted with a manipulative attempt to change in the uses or repurpose the clubhouse and the golf course? The clubhouse and its parking lot should have been razed when the golf course closed. If that had been done, there would be no blight, only an open field. Now, I've listened to quite a bit to the sound wall issue, and I have to say, I think the fact that the residents in Sienna are having to come here over and over again for the past several years is absolutely ridiculous. I think the sound wall should be built, even if it lowers it by two decibels. It should, it should reduce the amount of sound coming from a very busy freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laura Avila, followed by Olga Vidriales.
Don't turn the sound yet. Mr. Orlemans, we deserve to have confidence in our elected officials, that they have the mindfulness to listen to motions before them, adhere to the rules of conduct, and maintain decorum, which is exactly what you didn't do at the last council meeting. What a teaching moment of how not to behave as a man and as an elected official, Mr. Mayor. It is my sincere belief that you were trying to diffuse an untenable situation. However, it created a dangerous precedent by rewarding the hijacking of a council meeting brought about by the unprofessional, unhinged, and disrespectful behavior of Mr. Orlemans. Rather than continue to focus on the ugliness witnessed in this chamber, I wish to speak to what is now seaford on the agenda, the awarding of a contractor raise the sound wall in an area of the bypass that is wholly owned by the city of Brentwood. We should not have, expect anything other than to be treated with dignity, fairness, and having confidence in our officials that we'll be taken care of as promised. Are we now going to start second guessing commitments that have been made? When families purchased their homes, the Highway Four bypass didn't exist, and what did was little more than a two-lane road considerable distance from the neighborhood. Then came the bypass, and with its elevation, also came extensive widening of the roadway. The Sienna neighborhood is negatively, negatively affected by this structure we all benefit from. But for them, it's virtually in their living rooms, bringing with it an untenable noise level, unobstructed views and semis. Oh, and of course, the highly trafficked exit ramp is right there. My husband and I walk the neighborhood in its entirety during a weekday commute. The noise pollution at the lower area of the wall is abhorrent and should be alleviated as had been assured it would be by the city of Brentwood. No one should have to live under those conditions. The raising of the wall has been approved, budgeted, and all that was left to do was to award the contract, which came under budget. That sadly didn't occur on April 25th due to the preordained agendas of two people before me. How can we trust some of those in this body to do right by the citizens in this city when they go against a commitment set forth by prior councils? Or does their recent inclusion on this council exercise previous commitments? I hope you make the right decision morally. Yes, Ms. Pearson, I did say morally, and who are we without our moral compass? And one that your conscience can live with so that the mental, physical, and emotional health of those whose freedom and right to live healthfully will no longer continue to be severely compromised and impacted. Where is your humanity? Look to your soul and do the right thing. Thank you.
The next speaker is Olga Vidriales, followed by Ian.
Good evening, city council mayor and city council members. So I am against the city paying for the sound wall. This is not an emotional item. It is not a moral compass issue. I moved to Shadow Lakes in 2003, and at that time, my husband and I signed all the documents eyes wide open. It was disclosed, there was a two-lane highway, we were told it was going to four, and we signed all those appropriate disclosures. In real estate, if there is an issue with, with a sale of property, you look at the transfer disclosure statement, you look at the seller's property questionnaire, you look at the builder's disclosures. You don't get to go back and say, oh, gosh, I regret my mistake. I regret moving next to the sound wall. There is noise. I'm not denying that. There is, there are, we do have difficulty sleeping sometimes. I went into that, that purchase, that property eyes wide open. They disclosed everything. It is not the city's burden. What are you going to do if you set precedence as, as Councilmember Pearson said? Let's fix the whole wall then. You fixed two to four feet. Then let's go ahead and fix the whole thing. Why not let the city bear that burden? Rose Garden, the train's going to be active possibly soon. There's a lot of sellers and buyers' real estate transactions there. What are we going to do? Go back and fix those unhappy buyers because there's too much train noise? I know that three of you live in the district, and you want to appease these people, and I totally get that. But you have to think of the 66,000-plus residents that live in Brentwood. Take care of our monies, make sure that it goes, it's spent appropriately. We are not here for buyer's remorse. We are not here because someone bought a piece of property eyes wide shut. Everything has been disclosed. There could be issues, there may be issues. Go back to Caltrans for that wall, go back to developer, follow the proper line, the proper path. That does not fall on the city of Brentwood. Again, it has nothing to do with morals. Real estate is a business. I know we have some people that are very savvy in numbers analysts. Look at the numbers. Let's take, let's pull the emotion out of it, and let's look at the real facts. Whose fault is it for that wall being built poorly perhaps? Whose fault is it if you bought on the bypass? If you didn't know what you were doing, why are we coming back to the city to pay for this now? Does that mean we're, we're setting precedence if we go ahead and do that? That means everyone that buys a property, that they're not happy because it's across from a park and there's too much noise, they're on, on the bypass, the train's coming, oh my, I made the wrong decision. That's not how this works. That's not how real estate works. There's proper avenues to follow. I hope that the three of you that do live in that district, I get you want to appease your constituents, I get that, but please keep in mind the whole city of Brentwood, the rest of, the rest of the citizens, and spend our money wisely. And also, Councilwoman Orlemans, thank.
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Ian.
All right. Good evening, council. It's an honor 99% of the time to work for the city. I just came here from BFAC and to represent the city on our youth commission. But Tony and Patina, listen up. Here's the 1%. Tony, you know what's the most stupid thing ever? Not, not what the mayor said to you. It's your behavior. What was that behavior? You watch on the youth commission how we can act as teens. We're full of hormones. In the morning, I'm happy. In the afternoon, I'm crazy, but I don't act like you, especially not that dais. How dare you disrespect that dais? That was a horrible disrespect to this city, to this state, in this country, especially considering you're a cop? How would you, what would you do if you acted like that on a traffic stop? Like, imagine that. I want everyone to think about that. And Patina, I want you to look at me. Don't, don't look at your papers. Listen to me as the pub commenter. You saw how I handled a family emergency on the dais. Why can't you tell Tony to handle his behaviors better on the dais? Again, you're not looking at me. You're writing down on paper. You saw in a youth commission meeting how well I handled it in the mayor's chair, when I was getting phone calls from my grandpa, not knowing what was going on home. I didn't freak out. I asked very kindly for the, for a recess. Yet, Tony, you decided to storm out back there and probably cause a Brown Act violation because three of you walked back there. And yes, I know about the Brown Act violation. It's posted on Facebook. And I, and I feel sorry to the assistant city attorney to have to deal with that. And also, Chola, thank you so much for all the amazing work you have done, because Patina really disrespected you last meeting, saying we're going to end up like Stockton. None of you will ever let that happen in a trillion billion years. Like, working at BFAC, I would never let that happen. Thank you, Ruth, for having an amazing pool facility for me to work at. And I just want to turn on a good note. Hope you know, thank you so much for being troopers. We really, really appreciate you. You guys are just out there sticking your necks out, supporting the city. We should definitely build the sound wall. Our city engineers then really do the best job back then. It's up to us to fix it. And mayor, please take very carefully what road you're going down, because you can either help the city or you can lead the city to hell. I'm sorry, have to comment this way. Have a great night, everyone.
I have no additional speaker cards. I do have four people on Zoom with their hands raised. I'll start with Carol McCozy. Carol, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you via Zoom. As a single parent who works full-time, it does make it difficult sometimes to be in more than one place at a time. I just wanted to share my own experience briefly and qualify my statements by saying that I've spent my entire professional career as a federal law enforcement investigator and now working in corporate investigations. And all of that to say that I try to approach everything from a factual basis, regardless of the emotion or the energy that I feel about a certain situation. It's obvious to me that this is hotly contested and very emotional, and I can understand why residents might feel that way. What I don't understand is the vehement opposition coming from some of our council members. As a resident of the Sienna community, I would like to say that I was not the original owner of my home. I bought it from the original owner, and when I did, there were no disclosures, there was no documentation, there was nothing that said anything about construction or the subsequent situation with Highway Four. I still felt like the bypass was good for our community, and since I believe in doing things for others, even if you don't personally benefit, I was happy to see that project happening. Even though we endured, you know, 24-hour construction teams for a year and dust and noise, I still felt like it would be better for the citizens of our community. What I was not aware of was how the sound level was going to increase and impact our quality of life. And I noticed that Cortona Park, at that time, it's now called Coger, had raised their sound wall probably about six months before the construction started. So I guess all of that to say, we've seen and heard mountains and mountains and mountains of evidence, factual evidence, reports, research, assessments, you know, evaluations. And while I appreciate the objections, they are really false equivalents. They don't duplicate the exact same scenario. And also, I've just heard a lot of what if and then and this and that type of scenarios. You know, we're, we're, we're saying that we don't want this to go through because we think that it might set a precedence. I'm concerned about the precedence it might set when you have a project that's been approved, budget allocated, under budget, and you're, you know, trying to kill it. That's the precedence I am afraid of setting. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. I wanted to point out one thing to all of you. I spoke with Dash about this, and he let me know that the following people actually visited his neighborhood. Casey McCain came two times, Eric N., Gus G., Karen Rary, and Susannah Meyer. So they came to his neighborhood to actually hear for themselves what the noise sounds like, because the sound of a semi truck rumbling over the freeway is not the same as a little ding at your audiologist. There's also the quality of the decibels that we have to consider. I, I really think this has gone far enough, $400,000 to give people peace of mind and a much better quality of life, I don't think is a lot to spend. I understand that when you sign a contract to buy a house, there are disclaimers. My house sits on a earthquake fault, and I'm aware of that. We've never had an earthquake. But still, like, yes, we are aware. However, the people who bought these homes did not sign up for 24/7 traffic. The other part you have to consider is that we've been growing 25% year over year, and so has the traffic. You know, these, these new homes that are being built, we're a bed and breakfast community. We have very few companies here in Brentwood. So everybody gets up in the morning and goes somewhere on the freeway, because you either work in Concord, Walnut Creek, San Jose, et cetera. You, you either take Walnut to, to that awful road that name I just forgot, or you get on four. But those are the two. And so I think we need to get this project done. I want to thank the three council members for voting this up. I think we need your strength and your leadership again to vote this through, get it through the finish line. Let's represent the residents of Brentwood. Let's do the right thing, and let's vote this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brayden Hayna. Brayden, go ahead.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness, it's been a minute. I don't even remember how to do this thing. Well, I just wish I could be there in person because it sounds like it's a lot of fun going on there at 3:30, 9 o'clock, and we're still in public comment. Yeah, so just real quick, you know, I go back and forth on the sound wall. Obviously, you want, you want the people to have that peace of mind. You want the people to, to have that quality of life improved and be able to sleep through the night and, and not worry about all that noise. But then you, you take emotion out of it. I can't remember who said that. You take emotion out of it. You look at the facts. These people knew coming in to buy the property that, that there was a chance, and it was planned that there was going to be four lanes on this highway. And, and if you close your eyes and sign the agreement, that's on you. Don't come crying to the city to fix the problem that, that you caused, so to speak. I, I think that, you know, when you, when you look at everything everybody's saying, it's just, it comes down to the facts. And again, the facts are, the wall is a waste, it's a waste, and there's no, no reason for it. Another thing, there's, I've had so many people talk to me and call me and ask me where I am. It's like I kind of disappeared off the face of the earth. Number one, I want to say that Danny Dorman. Um, number one, I want to say that Danny Dorman, um, people are tired of hearing from you. Um, you're just a little minion for Hovita Mendoza. Same goes for you, Cenziana Todor. Uh, you lost the election six months ago, and you're still complaining about it. People are tired of it. Why don't you just move on like the rest of us have? And maybe you should run again and run a better campaign, and maybe you'll be in that seat right next to your buddy, Hovita. Um, people are tired of it. Um, it's just a bunch of complaining that nobody wants to hear. I don't want to hear it. I watched the meetings the next day on Wednesday. I don't want to hear it. It's the same darn people. I'm not saying anything about your freedom of speech, but people are fricking tired of it. Anyway, that's, that's, I digress. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and complain, I guess, pulling a page out of their book. Um, no on the sound wall, and I hope you all have a great night. I hope to be down there soon to see all of you and get all the wonderful dirty looks. Have a great night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marisol Valles, followed by Cenziana Todor. Marisol, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I would like to ask Mayor Bryant and Vice Mayor Meyer to bring forward a censure of Tony Orlemans. His behavior from the previous meeting were out of control and against the ethics policy. I don't know. I mean, it seems like he has an anger management issue, um, since we've seen him get forceful with his tone a couple of times now. He proved it again tonight by harassing residents during their public comment. Um, Danny did bring up an interesting point that made my eyes pop in terms of his concealed weapon, but I'll leave that up to the rest of the council to, to bring that up. Mayor Bryant, Vice Mayor Meyer, and Councilmember Mendoza, please pass the sound wall tonight. And I hope, Joel, please do the right thing. It's, you know, we're not, it just seems like it's, is this about developers? Making sure developers don't get sued? I don't understand why we won't just do what we've been talking about for the last six years. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. The next speaker is Cenziana Todor. Cenziana, go ahead.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. Um, I am very pleased with the result of the first portion of the special meeting. Um, I would like to see those special meetings actually scheduled at times where residents can actually, um, not be commuting from, uh, their jobs. So, um, you heard that from several residents tonight. Um, however, um, the reason of my public comment is, please vote yes on C4. Approve the contract for the wall. We've been waiting too long. These people need to find their peace and quiet and, um, the place they dreamed to, um, have to raise their family. All of you have families. All of you want a nice environment, quiet and conducive to raise a family. Two, uh, Mr. Orlemans and, um, Ms. Pearson, bring the audiologist and make, make it public record. Have them use the three, five minutes, whatever ends up being. Um, you are both liars. We heard your arguments during your campaign. You kept lying during your campaign. You keep lying now. Nobody trusts you. Bring the proof and make it public record. It's just what I would do to support my argument. Tony, um, somebody playing music outside your backyard or on the street somewhere is not continuous noise. By the way, bad argument. And a word of advice, everyone who complains about this kind of stuff, all I tell them, please call the Brentwood Police Non-Emergency Line. They're very responsive, and they will take care of it. Also, Mayor and Vice Mayor, I count on you to censure Tony Orlemans. He's not fit to fill that seat. Taxman, uh, tax money pays for the microphone he kicked, the chair he kicked. And again, he's a flight risk. He has a concealed, uh, carry permit. And he puts everyone in that chamber in, uh, danger by having the spurs of like uncontrolled anger, rage, whatever you want to call it. And seriously, he needs to keep it together, behave, and not threaten the residents who try to get their point across. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments. And we will move into, uh, informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. And I think I started at the right side last time. I will start on the left, Councilmember Orlemans. Sorry about that. Since the last meeting, I attended the Tri-Delta Transit Meeting. Um, I don't know exactly how this works out. I hosted a student visit here at City Hall for a Heritage High School, uh, class. Uh, we brought him in the dais and gave him a little, uh, tour of what City Council was all about. It was amazing watching these kids, and the parents with them had a million questions. It was, it was a really fun event. So I appreciate you not being here and giving me the opportunity to do that. Um, the groundbreaking ceremony, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the new school on Smith Drive. Um, I attended the Arbor Day tree planting at Meawak Park, hosted by the City of Brentwood and the Rotary Club. Uh, I watched the Planning Commission Meeting. I wasn't able to attend. Uh, Brentwood, I attended the Brentwood Literary Stroll. It was, it was a great event. It was a lot of fun. And there was a, uh, lot of conversation going on with the authors, which I, I wasn't really expecting. But getting that opportunity to talk to the people that actually wrote the books, it was amazing. Um, I attended the Downtown Coalition Meeting last night. Uh, and then the East Bay Expo at the Community Center this afternoon and the CIP Workshop this evening.
Vice Mayor. Thank you. I had a meeting with Jessica Enos from Enos Family Farms. Learned quite a bit about, um, some of the agricultural families in, uh, Brentwood, how those interactions with the harvest time work. Attended the League of Cities Mayor's and Councilmembers Department meeting to discuss election process for our Southern California Vice President. And did a, um, also met and had a debrief of the City Leaders Summit, which I attended. Um, I did attend the groundbreaking of the new school, although I, I was late because I, as I communicated with the superintendent, I had a meeting that ended at the start time. So got there, but not as early as I would have liked. Uh, watched the Planning Commission Meeting, learned some interesting things there. Was, uh, on the Special Land Use and Development Committee meeting to go over some of the grants for, um, economic development. Um, attended the Mayor's Conference in San Ramon. And attended the Cinco de Mayo at Azucar Candies and more on Brentwood Boulevard. Fantastic event, very, um, a lot of families, a lot of really interesting culture and dancing. It was fantastic. Um, I, I volunteered at the Friends of the Brentwood Library Literary Stroll. And in our site, um, our author sold all of his books, had to go out to his car and get more, and didn't expect to sell any. It was great. We had a, I want to say, minimum 15 people for each of our times, and then sometimes went over 20, so it was really great. Um, and then had a meeting with Amy Tilly with Downtown Business Association to discuss this, uh, the planning for the Community Service Day that we'll hear about later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello. Since the last time we've met, I watched the Park and Rec Meeting. Um, and that's where we, they did go over the soccer complex. So it'll be good for us to see what items will work and which ones won't. Um, attended an, um, Our Neighborhood Voices meeting with over 700 registered people. So, um, people are understanding that the state has taken away a lot of our rights, and a lot of what we do is not gonna be stuff we can do anymore if we don't put a stop to it. So, um, that was great. Watched the Planning Commission Meeting. I did pull two items from that meeting. Um, one of them was actually over sound. The sound study was not included in the agenda packet, so I had questions about that. And, um, so it's kind of apropos, given our meeting tonight, that we are diligent about how we review that. Uh, attended the California League of Cities Latino Caucus Board Meeting. Attended the Brentwood School Groundbreaking, um, on Smith Road. And thank you for everyone who volunteers our time on the Measure B Committee. Attended the LED Meeting, um, attended two Our Neighborhood Voices leadership meetings. Had a meeting with Senator Grayson because he is co-author of SB 423, so, um, let him know we were not happy with that. Um, attended a couple of Cali meetings, which is a meeting on Sunday nights for electors across California so we can share best practices. Attended, um, the Downtown Brentwood Coalition, um, meeting last night. They have it every couple of months. I'm really excited about what they have going on. Um, 4th of July is looking like it's gonna be a lot of fun, um, which last year I came downtown afterwards for dinner, and it was empty. So it's gonna be exciting that we have a lot of event, events planned. And then, um, today, I walked through the, uh, the Chamber event, the Chamber Expo that they had, and then our CIP Workshop.
Councilperson Pearson.
Yes, uh, since our last meeting, I attended the Brentwood Unified School District Groundbreaking, um, for the new elementary school. Um, attended the PAL Meeting, um, which I have to say, thank you to PAL. They're fallen angels. Um, and they have a lot of phenomenal things that they're doing for our at-risk youth in the city of Brentwood. So if you don't know what they're doing, check out their Facebook page. Um, the same with Downtown Brentwood Coalition. I'm just really excited about all the things and how the businesses are being supported. Um, and then with the, they're doing a drone show during the 4th of July, um, and they're seeking out some support with funding for that. So also check out their websites. Um, East Bay Business Expo today. Um, again, our Chamber of Commerce doing phenomenal events. Um, a lot of them still remaining in this month. Check out their website. I watched the May 2nd, um, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting and attended the CIP Workshop today.
Thank you. Uh, since the last time we met, I did have to be out of town for a few days for a family emergency. Um, but, uh, I attended the East Bay Business Expo. Uh, that was a partnership with, uh, the Brentwood Chamber and got to meet some absolutely amazing people. Uh, we, we have businesses here in town that, uh, I'm very thankful, uh, for this opportunity for our residents to be able to find out what resources that they have locally so that they don't have to go suffer the traffic on Highway 4 and Vasco and, and have to go out of town. Uh, we have so many great, uh, businesses and residents that, that have businesses out of their homes, uh, that, uh, attending the East Bay Business Expo will really enlighten you as to what is available. And, uh, a lot of them are also looking for employees. So, uh, if you know people that are looking for jobs, one resource that we have is our, um, Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. They are familiar with different businesses that might be hiring, so take advantage of that. Also, uh, I attended a meeting with Sutter Delta Medical Centers. Um, it's really early in the process, but the goal is, uh, to partner with these different medical companies to bring more medical and hospital resources out here. Uh, and, um, I'm gonna go to the next. I attended the Mayor's Conference, uh, with, uh, the Vice Mayor. Also, I attended the Tri-Delta Board Meeting. Uh, I had a meeting with an individual, uh, that, uh, was interested in bringing a company to, uh, the Byron Airport. And so I met with him and then the Director of Airports for Contra Costa County. Um, the reason I met with them is because he will be hiring from Brentwood. Uh, it's, uh, a multifaceted, different corporation, but if, if it comes to fruition, it'd be really nice to have, uh, that business near us. Um, I also met with Assemblyman Grayson's representative regarding Highway 4 traffic on what was formerly called the bypass, uh, and some of the abilities to, uh, meet with the, the right boards and commissions at a state level, uh, to get some activity, uh, and, and help for our city to be able to partner with the residents and deal with that issue. Uh, I also, um, met with several of the, uh, representatives, uh, for regional partnership in economic development, uh, from Pittsburgh, Brentwood, uh, Oakley, and, uh, figuring out ways that we can, uh, partner with each other to regionally bring economic development and high-paying jobs here. Uh, it won't be very long until we're going to have to, uh, really find some, some outside-of-the-box solutions with the traffic conditions that we're gonna be seeing at the 680, the 242, the Highway 4, with some of the problems that are, are just gonna continue to grow. Uh, and that's all I have to report at this time. Um, before we go into the consent calendar, I have a request for a five-minute, um, recess. For council members, is it okay if we have, have a recess before we go into consent calendar? Okay, we'll have a five-minute recess before consent. This time, we are going to reconvene the city council meeting and we will move into consent calendars. I would like to pull items C1 and C2. Are there any other items that would like to be pulled from the consent calendar by council?
There's no other items to be pulled. I will make a motion to adopt the consent calendar, all less items C1 and C2.
And I'll second.
Let me be very clear. Item C1, the proclamation for Police Week. Item C2, proclamation for Public Works Week are the only items for discussion to be pulled right now from the consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we understand. And it was clear from the CIP meeting that nothing else needs to be pulled, so.
Okay. Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Item moves. Item C1 is the proclamation of May 14th as Police Week. And if you could meet with me at the deus.
We should do this every time so you guys can come all the time.
Wow. We don't just have the finest chief and captain and lieutenants and, no, captains. Okay, captains going down the road, all the way down to Ca, who was the police IT gentleman for many years, and dispatch. But we have the best of Brentwood here tonight to receive these recognitions. And so before I read the proclamation, Chief, would you like to introduce who's here?
I sure would. So this is Officer Johnson, Officer of the Year. Liz Johnson, yes, they are related. It is his wife, Professional Staff of the Year. Works in our records department. And Rebecca, Becca Mars, our Dispatcher of the Year. I will agree with you, we do have the finest department in the county, in the state, in my opinion. I'm just a little biased, but I will say anecdotally before, we had a lot of time and Officer Johnson actually made it all the way to the top of the parking structure and cleared it out and came all the way back down and still in time to receive the proclamation. So, thank you very much.
I do want to say, in light of the recent incident that was, the information, the video was sent out to the community, I have watched many of those incidents over the years in different trainings that I've had and different things that other departments have released. I have never seen one more thoroughly and clearly produced and that displayed the outstanding commitment and professionalism and bravery of our officers and their dedication to protect our families day and night. And so unfortunately, that can't be in this proclamation, but I want to just extend my heartfelt thanks to our department, its men and women, for the work that they do. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Brentwood Police Department. And whereas the Brentwood Police Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all members of the community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas the men and women of the Brentwood Police Department unceasingly provide this vital public service, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week and calls upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities dated this ninth day of May 2023. Thank you so much.
Two seconds, I know it's getting late, but I want to thank you, Mayor, and council for all of your support over the years for the Brentwood Police Department. We truly appreciate it and the support of our community. As everyone knows, we can't do police work without our community and I truly appreciate the efforts the community puts forward to help us solve crime and keep our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And Officer Johnson, enjoy that parking space at PD. Item C2 is the proclamation regarding National Public Works Week. I think many of us in this room have lived in other communities outside of the city of Brentwood and there are many fine communities in the country, but I've never lived in a better community than the city of Brentwood. And it doesn't just happen without lots of dedication and work. And tonight, we are going to honor one of the individuals that has impacted every single one of our lives, day and night, the quality of our life, the happiness that we take for granted living in Brentwood. And you may not have ever even known that while you were sleeping soundly and taking care of your families, that this fine gentleman was taking care of them as well. His name is Ralph Prado. Ralph, if you can join with me. Now, that sounded really good, but it is, there's, here, I've got to read you why. Ralph was hired in 1989 and has been with the city for 34 years. He's the longest-tenured employee in the city and is employee number eight. Look, not a gray hair on his head. I'm just going to stop right there. I was told to mention that. He is the longest-tenured employee in the city. When Ralph started working for the city, there were only 7,500 residents and the public works employees didn't have specialties. They did, all did all of the jobs. There were no separate divisions for water, wastewater, garbage, facilities, or streets. So over the last 34 years, Ralph really has done it all for Brentwood. Ralph's dedication and loyalty to the city is the main reason you don't see graffiti-covered walls throughout downtown. He also the primarily responsible for making sure the road striping is in good condition and visible at night. He also makes, installs, and repairs most of the street signs throughout town, cleans up illegal dumping, and performs most of the weed abatement activity. Ralph's hard work embodies the spirit of public works and his service and dedication is a tribute to the many public works professionals throughout the nation and their contributions to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Ralph, thank you so much for everything you do. I've got a proclamation to read, but would you like to speak for a couple of minutes? I was told you wouldn't like to, but I'm going to hand you the microphone anyway.
Well, first is an honor, receive this award. And I've been blessed to work for the city of Brentwood for these many years. I remember when we start working right here in the city, it was only one department. And we used to do everything, sewer, water, streets, landscaping. And then we start bringing in the county to the city. So they take part of the landscaping away from us and I still remember that. We keep part of the landscaping with us and I become a landscaping specialist with the city of Brentwood. So it's when we start dividing the group, you know, so then we start creating the streets separate, water, sewer. And it's a long story, so I know everybody's been right here for a long, long meeting tonight. So I'd like to say thank you to all my bosses, to all the staff in the city, the manager, city council, and my public works director, my manager. Thank you to all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before you leave, I'm going to read this. But he was thanking the men that worked for him when they started and now they are directors and leaders. And I will tell you, having had an opportunity to spend time with our Public Works team and others from around the country, that there is a culture that has been created in our Public Works Department of excellence and service. And Ralph is one of the creators of that culture. Every single individual he has trained, every person that has watched him come to work and do a committed public service work for our Public Works Department has him as a wonderful example of what it means to be a public servant in your work and take pride in the place that you work. And so, thank you. His influence goes far beyond what many influential people have had in this community. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Brentwood. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest, in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Brentwood to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week and urges all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
While the mayor is walking back up, I just am going to complete the consent calendar motion by reading the ordinance titles quickly. Ordinance 1057 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood adding Chapter 5.74, lost, stolen, or abandoned shopping carts through the Brentwood Municipal Code. And ordinance 1058 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood adding Chapter 8.38, commercial property maintenance to the Brentwood Municipal Code.
There is a motion on the floor. We have a first and a second. Let me go into this. I move to approve items C1 and C2 of the consent calendar.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We will move into item D1, business items. Our next item is an informational report on city council proclamations, city events, permitted events, and staff cost estimates. And Tian will present on this item. Tian?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tian Nian, Recreation Manager. As mentioned tonight, we have an informational report for City Council for discussion. Some background information about the report. So this report summarizes information about events that happened within the city of Brentwood. The events that occur can come from a range of organizers, funding, sources, and affiliations. The events that we'll cover today, for the most part, are brought up due to having some kind of tire connection to the city, whether they have funding or sponsorship connections or they're occurring in city facilities slash public right-of-way. Documents attached to this staff report reference various city policies and guides on how these requests are processed and permitted. So for this staff report, what we attempted to do is try to categorize the many, many different events that happen in the city. So I put this chart together, tried to summarize a lot of that staff report. What it includes is categories for proclamation, city events, permitted events, and fee waivers. Proclamations are recognition celebrations that are requested to be adopted by city council. City events are just that, events that are put on by city staff, typically being free community-wide events that are city-funded. Permitted events are events that obtain a permit, typically from the Parks and Recreation Department, and they're, again, using city facilities or public right-of-way. These permitted events are typically not city events. A lot of times, they come from private residents or nonprofits or commercial corporations. And then that last category for us is fee waivers. These are slightly a mixed category. Typically, they usually come from applications for permitted spaces within the city and then they request fees to be waived through our fee waiver, excuse me, through fee waivers. And then that's aligned with And then that's aligned with our policy related to use of city funds. This one's a little bit unique, and that's why it looks a little bit different on the chart, that typically the applicant would be the organizer, planner, they provide funds for the events. But because the city does provide funds in the sense of waiving fees, there are affiliations with the city. Typically, this is represented as cosponsorship events. So that last category is a little bit unique, and I tried to break it down there in this chart. Something I do want to acknowledge that, you know, there could be discussion for another category that's not listed here in the staff report, and that'd be events that receive city grant funds. That's a whole conversation in itself, so it wasn't included in the staff report. But I did want to acknowledge that in this presentation. So as mentioned, that first category is proclamations. Proclamations have a big range. They're, they typically fall under the ceremonial documents policy 110-4. They can come from city staff or council requests, but they can also come from externally, so from residents or nonprofits or other organizations. Proclamations are recognitions, or they're designed to provide recognition and awareness, and they can range from days, weeks, or month-long celebrations. As you can see on this list, I believe city council adopted the 43 proclamations that you see, and they range from different interests, lengths, and affiliations. Excuse me. As mentioned, city events, this is one of the ones I'm excited to talk about. These are events put on by city staff. They come from city funding. Some examples, if I can do quick plugs, is we have upcoming movie in the park happening May 19th with the viewing of Aladdin. We have our first concert in the park in our Concert in the Park series on June 16th. And we also have another example, which is our upcoming Fourth of July parade in Carnegie. Other city events include ribbon-cutting ceremonies, grand openings. And also unique to this year, there's also one-time events like our 75th anniversary The next category, as mentioned, is permitted events. The list in front of you shows example of our permitted special events. Again, a reminder, these typically are not city events. They're put on by typically nonprofit organizations or other organizations. This list isn't exhaustive, but it's an example of some of the applications we received for 2023. And again, permitted events can range from these special events, but also include your typical park or picnic rentals, rentals of your sports fields, or rentals of our facilities, including at our community center and at our senior activity center. So as mentioned, we tried our best to provide some categories for this informational report, knowing that city council was going to discuss these items. Some considerations as city council discusses are listed here, as mentioned in the staff report. First one is resources, you know, depending on how city council discusses, consideration for investment in different items that they're looking at for events, whether that's staff time, city resources, overtime budgets, or considerations for staff capacity to, to do additional or more events. Limited expertise and overall knowledge, as I referenced on the list of proclamations. A lot of those are brought forth by different nonprofits, different religious or cultural affiliated organizations, who have much more specialty and interest in those areas, as opposed to acknowledgement that some of our city staff may not be as well-versed in those celebrations and proclamations. Support and selection, counter-programming, and locations. I think this is something for council to consider, to identify, you know, which events to highlight, which ones to choose, you know, what happens with the number of events that we have in town. We have so many. Will they overlap? Will they counterprogram? Will it take attendance from one event to another? So kind of lump that together. And then the other piece of that's going to be locations, you know, finding locations for these events on a weekly or weekend basis is a challenge, so that's something for city council to consider. Finally, application periods. This one was included because it was noted in the staff report that in the past, proclamations came to city council frequently, at different time spans, sometimes not, with not a lot of notice and time. So what happened, I believe, this past, excuse me, this year, was that a list of proclamations was brought to council for them to adopt, kind of together as a group, as a bunch. That's something to consider as city council looks at this item, whether they look at the existing city council administrative policy 1012 of how we use city funds for fee waivers, potentially providing some discussion or, or feedback on that process of how we look at fee waivers as they come up. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Are there any clarifying questions of staff regarding this item?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a, do we celebrate Memorial? Memorial Day? Does the city do anything to celebrate Memorial Day right now?
No, the city doesn't have a special event that's a primary event that we do for Memorial Day. I believe that there are events at like the local cemetery and are done through our veterans' group, but the, the city itself has not taken the lead on that.
Okay. And then in addition to the piggyback on that, do we do anything to celebrate our veterans right now besides the, the, the thing you just mentioned?
Veterans Day is another event that is put on by the veterans, and it's been typically at Veterans Park. So the city has helped to facilitate that event, but it's, it's been an event that's been really driven by the veterans through the special event permit process, and we help facilitate that. But again, it's not a city budgeted or city event.
If, if I can add also, council member, we do have a program, a banner program at Veterans Park, I believe, that allows those who want to recognize veterans to put an application for us to put up banners. Typically, those are hung, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Mulder, a Memorial Day through Veterans Day if I'm, if I'm correct there?
Yes, that's correct. We have a memorial veterans banner program at Veterans Park.
Thank you. I've seen them. They're really nice. Thank you.
Any further clarifying questions of staff? Seeing none, at this time, we will open public comments.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the form provided at the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. I have one speaker card for in-person. I'll call on Rod.
To speak? Yes, in regards to item D1, I highly support city council proclamations. It's a great way for the city council to honor the citizens of Brentwood who have made many accomplishments, and it always makes me feel glad to see that. And for an honor to be conferred, it needs to be conferred by honorable people, so that the people who receive it feel the honor. I feel like we have a, a problem with that. Having said that, on the night of April 25th, 2023, the consent calendar was brought forward with an item C14, a routine contract approval for the sound wall protecting the Sienna neighborhood from excessive freeway noise. Items C1 and C3 were proclamations, and C12 was a routine adjustment to the expense for an automated police dispatch system. A motion was put on the floor by council member Mendoza to pass the consent calendar, with the exception of C1 and C3, since the mayor had suggested that those proclamations should be read out loud. As Vice Mayor Meyer was offering a second on that motion, council member Orlemans broke in and said he wanted C12 and C14 to also be pulled. However, the motion was on the floor. Mendoza repeated the motion, stating very clearly and with emphasis, leaving no doubt that items C1 and C3, and not, he said, not very hard, C12 and C14 were to be pulled, and the motion was again seconded. The mayor repeated the motion out loud, again emphasizing that only C1 and C3 were to be pulled, and not, really emphasizing the not, C12 and C14. You could not have been more clear. The city clerk then read out the title of one of the items, and then the mayor then one more time, just to be clear about things, really driving it home. He said, he read out the motion, and again saying C1 and C3, but not C12 and C14. So that by that time, Orlemans and Pearson were hearing that not for the third time. The more, motion was repeated four times, three times with not C12 and C14. The motion then passed unanimously, with both Orlemans and Pearson joining the others and voting in the affirmative. After the proclamations were read and passed, the mayor attempted to move on to the next business item. Only then did Orlemans choose to display what can only be described as egregious conduct, expressing extreme displeasure that C12 and C14 were not pulled for discussion, demanding to know why. Apparently, he did not realize the reason was because everyone, including him, voted not to pull the two items. The mayor asked the assistant city attorney to explain the motion, which he did. Then Pearson weighed in. She had also somehow not understood, even though the motion had been repeated three times before the vote was taken, actually, repeated three times, given four times. The mayor attempted to patiently explain that he did understand, but Orlemans cut him off, saying the mayor understands nothing, that he was disgusting, and stating incorrectly that the mayor was deceptively trying to make things only appear to be fair, despite the mayor having bent over backwards to give him the opportunity to understand that his items were not in there and say something. And no, he just voted yes. He slapped his microphone away, stood up forcefully, thought his chair was pushed back, and as he stormed out, he demanded a recess, repeating loudly that it was the stupidest thing he'd ever heard in his life. He was already almost out of the room before the mayor obliged his demand to recess. Pearson stirred up immediately after and followed Orlemans out of the room in the direction of the conference room. A little later, while the camera was off, the mayor followed them, according to witnesses who were there. So three of them went into the conference room. Potential for a Brown Act violation was evident. That's kind of moot now, because we had a flagrant Brown Act violation here tonight, where I was addressed by a sitting council member during public comment. So that, that's a misdemeanor. When the video resumes, the council was seated, except for Mendoza, who was in the assistant room behind the dais. I won't go into all the details. But we, we did ask the attorney for clarification, noted the inquiry had been made as to whether the motion could be reconsidered. This question must have been asked outside of the public meeting. She replied that it could be reconsidered. Ironically, Pearson and Orlemans, by voting in the affirmative, retained the right to put forward a motion for reconsideration. Orlemans' prior demonstration was pointless, since by voting yes, he was able to put the motion to reconsider. He was the one who did not understand anything, unless it was law to show to be able to make the motion and delay the sound wall so he could kill it at the CIP meeting here tonight. When the attorney asked if there was any interest in hearing more about the procedure, Pearson immediately expressed interest, almost as, as she was expecting the invitation. It was explained that both C12 and C14 could be reconsidered, but Orlemans made a point of only asking to reconsider C14 as a motion, which made it very clear that it was the item that had him so stirred up as to storm out of the session. I'll be back.
The next speaker is Danny Doorman. I have no additional speaker cards in person. I have Danny Doorman on Zoom. Mr. Doorman, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. With respect to the line item, yeah, I agree. We should do it. The Brown Act's been brought up several times tonight, okay? And I feel sorry for the city attorney, because it's my understanding, oh, and please, Attorney Pearson, you know, you like to drop that title. It's my understanding that an attorney cannot offer a suggestion. They can only answer a question asked. So unfortunately, because this had never happened before, neither the mayor nor the remaining council could have asked, what is the remedy of Orlemans jumping out of his chair, having a hissy fit, walking off the dais before an official break was called? Now, I'm not going to put words in her mouth, but I will tell you what should have happened. First and foremost, he should never have been invited back. He left. He left of his own accord. The rules state, if you leave, you are not welcome back. Okay? Unless you're voted back in. Now, I don't even think you could do that. I haven't looked into that level of detail, because we've never experienced anything like this before. So he shouldn't have sat down. If he hadn't have sat down, he wouldn't have been able to participate in the vote that required unanimous consent to talk about, which then wouldn't have put Mayor Bryant in the very delicate position of voting yes or no. I, I understand why Joel did it. I don't like it, but I understand why. He wanted to appease and did not want to show an appearance of any type of bias. And I guess, listening to Mr. Orlemans saying, hey, you've waited five years. What's another two weeks? Let me tell you. I'll tell you. If I was supposed to get paid tomorrow, and my employer said, hey, it's going to be another two weeks, what's the big deal? Well, boy, how am I going to pay my mortgage? How am I going to pay my rent? How I'm going to buy food? Two weeks makes a big difference. Except in your world, I guess. And again, I am so befuddled by the action of both of them. They are obviously working in unison. I feel like I'm watching an episode of Survivor, and there's an alliance there. An alliance of two that seem to want to disrupt and dismantle everything that was done in the previous council. Now, why they want to, I don't know. I really don't. That's why I referred to the President Obama and President Trump situation, because it just seems so identical. They seem like they're bound and determined to just claw back every success we had. And they were so adamant to do it. They tried to do it as early as January 4th. And oh, yeah, Councilwoman Pearson, using your analogy, if the homes had their AC wired backwards, and the plumbing went up instead of down, and the house was blue instead of green, that's not the city's responsibility, that's the developer's responsibility. So if you're going to use some harebrained, try to correlate circumstance, at least use one that makes sense. It, it's, again, I am dumbfounded. And honestly, oh, let me last say, for the public, because you five know, and the city manager knows, and the city attorney knows, I'm expecting action from this body. If that action is not taken, and I've given you a reasonable amount of time, if this action is not taken, I will take it to the next level, the district attorney. I want to make sure I'm absolutely clear. I don't want to, Mayor, but I will.
The speaker's timer had expired. I have an additional speaker in the chambers, Lil Pierce.
Well, bringing things back on topic to the agenda item, I just want to thank the city for your continued support of the Brentwood Regional Community Chest. You've been a major, huge part of our, our endeavors for the last 40-something years. We're making plans already for this year, and we could not do it without you, without the city of Brentwood and the Brentwood School District and our wonderful community who comes every year and supports us beyond any of our expectations. So thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards or hands raised.
At this time, we will close public comments, move into council discussion. I, I would like, if that's okay, Councilmember Pearson, you, you brought up something that is really, really near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate it. I have been talking with the veterans groups about bringing a parade for Veterans Day to the city of Brentwood and partnering with our, our veterans groups as a new event. I've, I've had several of them approach me regarding that idea, and it's very frustrating for me. I, I don't like to talk disparagingly about other cities that we need partnership with in the region, but when Antioch does a better job of putting on a parade for their veterans than Brentwood does, that really is personally bothersome to me. We're better in Brentwood for many reasons, and, and I would love an opportunity to talk We're better in Brentwood for many reasons, and I would love an opportunity to talk about something like that as well. That's really all I have. Councilmember Pearson.
I agree, and that's why I brought it up. A couple of little discussion items. One, we have several veterans in the city of Brentwood, including our very own Councilman Orlemans, who not only served as a police officer, but as a veteran. I thank you for your service, and I'd like to be able to, as a city, recognize those veterans for their service as well. So, you know, I would like to see, it doesn't have to be the biggest event, but if we can do something for that. There's also a federally recognized holiday that is very important to me, and it is Juneteenth, which is June 19th of every, hopefully, I think it's every year of fall, it's, Juneteenth is June 19th. I would like our city to celebrate that. Reason being is, it goes back to supporting our constitution and our freedoms, and recognizing that at one point in time, even after our independence from another country, there were still people in this country after the Fourth of July that were still enslaved, people that look like me, people who look like, who, brown and black people, who were still enslaved in this country. And Juneteenth is near and dear to my heart, because it's the day we recognize the errors of our mistakes and we celebrate them. So I would like to see, like the mayor said, it's not to compare to any other cities, because I think we're better in Brentwood, but in East County, we, all of the cities are doing a phenomenal job. And, but Antioch puts on a Juneteenth event. We had a phenomenal group of people who put on a Juneteenth event last year, who I've talked to, have been encouraging, working to connect them with people who can support them. And one of the reasons, one of the things they struggle with is just the financial support and some of the other resources that I think our city can provide. There was something that was mentioned in the report about, you know, not having the, and one, I want to go and thank our Parks and Rec, because the events that you all do put on, they are so amazing. I was bragging on Parks and Recs the other day in our staffing meeting about all of the staff there, and then to go over to the downtown Brentwood Coalition and then CT in there and trying to figure out how you can be more supportive and what we can do on the city was just amazing. But some of the things that I'd like, the comment that was in the report, I understood it, it made sense about, hey, we just don't have the cultural understanding to take that in consideration. I think it is taken in. The thing I would say is just, even the things we don't understand, we should get understanding to be able to be more inclusive and diverse. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up, I thought that we talked about during one of our meetings about, we discussed the potential of adding point values beginning next year to our grant process, if the applicant throws an event that aligns with our proclamations. And I'd really like to see that become a part of a motion, because I think it was just part of a discussion, but I'd like to see our applicant, application for grant funding include that, an addition of a points, some points, whatever the point value is, if the applicant can show that they are throwing an event in alignment with our proclamations. So I know there are probably other council members who like to speak, but after everyone discusses, I'd like to make a motion to the specific items that I brought up.
I don't think we can legally assign points to cultural events, right?
Well, given the scope of tonight's agenda topic, I think we're a little far afield of that with changing the grant application. So staff has noted that, but I don't think that's within the scope of this agenda item at this moment.
I love events. I love, like my husband knows, I'll go to a fair in a second. I love them. I do think that in regards to a calendar of events, I think it's a bigger conversation. I thought we were going to talk about limiting the events because of bandwidth and what's going on with the park and the wear and tear and the expense of that. So I think we should talk about, like, what we can add. I went to Juneteenth, it was a great event, I loved it. But I think we need to talk about, what is, so if you, I think what we would need to see from staff is, what does an event cost? What is an event, like, is it just, so what does an event look like when the city owns it? Like, what does that expense look like? I don't know if you have that at hand. What would an event look like when we partner with someone that owns it? So, for example, you know, Cinco de, I mean, Dia de los Muertos, we don't own it, but we support it, right? We did last year through grants and stuff. So what does an event like that look like from a waiver and a grant perspective? And the other thing we've talked about, again, moving events away from downtown because of the wear and tear that, I mean, it's dirt basically out in the front. I mean, there's a lot of dirt, sorry. And I just saw a video for the chamber where they did it, and it's like, behind Greg is like, all dirt, no grass. So I think those are the kind of things that I would like to talk about, just overall expense, but I think a Juneteenth would be fantastic for our city. I think that it's a long time coming to be a permanent event, just hopefully, we can find someone to partner with. But, yeah, and, I mean, I love, I mean, I love going to a parade. I like being in parades, but I like going to a parade and sitting at Crown and Crow or the Lounge and having a cocktail while I watch it. So I'm all about that.
Agreed about Juneteenth and agreed about a parade. I love a Veterans Day parade. Velma, as I believe you knew of Velma also, she and I talked last year about bringing that event here, and it was a huge success, and the community really came together for it and enjoyed it and learned a lot from each other, and it was great. So I would absolutely support doing that again, understanding again what the implications of all the different formatting of that event would be. Same with the Veterans Day. Just as a quick FYI, I'm probably going off topic, but when we were first talking about the economic development grant events, I asked if we could add points for something that was bringing culture in, because we're really doing a good job with that, like inviting culture in. We could always do more, and we can always do better. So I tried to do that, and I was told I can't, and that's why Councilmember Mendoza was bringing that up. But yes, I do, I would support both of those events and exploring what they would look like.
Mr. Mayor, to add more on the economic development grants, the Land Use Committee did discuss briefly, making sure, we're going to be bringing back an update related to next year. This was the first time staff had an opportunity to go through the grant program with new criteria, and we've, we're looking forward to making it even a better process, and discussion of points will be discussed through LUD and will be brought back to the city council. Probably early next year, we come to council, hopefully late this year, come to LUD for recommendations, come to council.
If I can, just address a couple of, I think, some of the questions that were floated out there. I think maybe a piece of clarification, Councilmember Pearson, I think when you reference points on a grant, I don't know if you meant, we have the fee waiver process, and on that fee waiver application, we do ask the applicant, you know, how does this tie into the city council's strategic goals? So I don't know if you said grant, but you meant the fee waiver, so I just wanted to put that out there. And then for the fee waiver piece, it is separate from the economic development grant, so that's why I wanted to acknowledge that it's not necessarily included in the staff report, but acknowledge that that's another set of events that exist in their own categories. I think Councilmember Mendoza, I think some of the questions you asked, kind of short answer about some of the estimates, unfortunately, it's tough for me to give those a range, but just to kind of give you a little bit of food for that, for a range of events, when we're looking at our concerts in the Park Series, those can range between eight to twelve thousand for this fiscal year, but that's a very different number from three to four fiscal years ago. And again, that number is different for each concert, depending on the band and the support. For some of our movies in the Park, we budgeted out, I think, one to two thousand, again, just depends on the movie we're showing, what that looks like. So those are what some of the city events look like. As far as when we partner with other organizations, again, I hate to do the slippery answer, it depends. Through our fee waiver, fee waiver program that we have, I believe the policy references up to $5,000 for the department to be able to waive in fees. So some of our requests are a little bit more one-time events, that are a couple hundred dollars of fees we're waiving. Some of them are a series of events that get a little bit closer to those thousand dollars. And just mentioned today, you know, one of the applicants to that is the Chamber for their X-Bowl event that was mentioned tonight. So I hate to give you that gray answer, but it does range on what those events costs may look like.
Yeah, and I don't think we need that tonight, because I think that this takes a lot of analytics to go through it, and then also your headcount, like, what is the impact on your headcount? And do you have the bandwidth, right? Like, and, you know, I know you guys are tight, so I don't want you to do something where you're here working at eight or nine o'clock at night, but if we can find, and that's why I was thinking, is there any way we can partner? So I know the mayor spoke to the veterans, like, do they want to own the event? Or did they, they want the city to own it? Or do they want to do a partnership?
The conversation has always been about a partnership.
Okay.
With, you know, planning together.
Yeah.
And finding out what the city's able to do, what the police department's cost is going to, everything involved with the parade, I know can be very challenging, and so that conversation was always about partnership with the city, not just the city putting it on.
Yeah, so I think just like going through all of that and just making sure you guys have the bandwidth, because I know, I don't know, when did we talk about our budget when I brought up, you guys need more headcount? Like, I don't know if we're going to get to the point where, like, do you guys need more headcount? And then we don't have the money to do headcount right now? So that's kind of what I'm thinking in my head, because I know you guys are really strained also.
And I think the only other thing I wanted to try to address, if I may, was the question about city park and another, a little bit of separate item. I think that is planned to come back to council this summer, I think around June or so, and I think that was a little bit more specific to the use of city parks, a little bit separate again from the, excuse me, informational report tonight.
You know, I'm always dissuaded from completely adding on a bunch of fees, because I don't, we have to balance having events for our residents versus protection of, like Councilmember Mendoza said, the parks and the grounds, or our police being called in for overtime and it's coming out of the chief's budget, which Councilman Orlemans brought up last time. Have we ever considered doing a, like, a small fee per applicant for our grounds, for groundskeeping in the application process? And if those applicants can afford it, it would be part of the fee waiver?
No, I don't think that we've had, like, a cost recovery for, you know, the grounds, something we could take a look at when we bring back the special event, because we are going to come back with the special event process and application process and cost recovery. So one thing to consider when we do talk about these community events is, you know, these are our local nonprofit, a lot of community volunteers that are bringing these events forward, a lot of times, they are fundraising these events for community benefit for nonprofits. So it is a balance between what we can do for cost recovery versus trying to really help facilitate events, and the more events that are driven by our community, it's less that staff, that city funding has to go into it. And really, our residents know best when it's what they really want to see in Brentwood for a lot of these events. So there is a balance there. One thing, I do love these ideas of some of these new events that you're bringing forward tonight. I think we do have to take a look at staff capacity and resources. This might be a good item for strategic planning in the fall to add, see what prioritizing the events we have and seeing if we can resource for more. Right now, we do not have any additional budget allocated for additional events, so we would have to look at that as well. I know I've been asking for a lot of budget already tonight for other projects, so I know that I've made Carrie, our finance director, a little nervous when it comes to additional resources. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of throw that kind of context out there as well.
Yeah, because tonight is no motion, right? It's just an informational, and then so you're thinking that in September, we would go through it and make a motion to include what we want? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, from a strategic planning process, it might be a good item to review the city events that we do, that budget, and prioritize if there's other things the city would like to add.
Okay.
Now, if there are events that are a huge priority that the council wants to move forward with and try to find resources, then obviously, we will take a look at that as well. I know Juneteenth is right around the corner, so that would be a challenge. Veterans Day, we still have some time to, you know, work through something like that.
Yeah, I want to make it clear, I wasn't suggesting this year at all. I know how planning takes, plan events, and I don't think we have time for it. I just want to clarify with our city attorney, can a motion be raised during the informational reports?
The specifics of what you're talking about tonight isn't particularly on the agenda, but I think what we're still looking for is some direction about if our events, if there are certain proclamations you want to tie to certain events, we'd love that direction. What we would do is, if you do want to encourage us to look at some additional future events, we'd love some time to be able to work on that and come back with some cost estimates on personnel and costs to put those together and maybe even timing. So we're still willing to do that. So the more information you have, the more informed you are about giving us direction about what kind of events we can put together. So the answer, the short answer is yes. Give us some direction tonight through a motion, and we can come back, as if it was a future agenda item, per se, and we'll come back with more information, so you can see what that looks like.
And before you make a motion, I have one more question I forgot to ask. Thank you. On page 875 of the packet, there's a part for nonprofit that says, when use of a facility is by a nonprofit organization, as determined by Internal Revenue Service and/or State of California, with at least seventy-five percent of its membership made up of Brentwood residents, et cetera, et cetera. I don't believe that a lot of the nonprofits that use our facilities are serving seventy-five percent of their service, you know, the people that they're serving within the city limits. I'm thinking of years ago, when I was with Meals on Wheels, and I got a fee waiver to use the community center for a volunteer appreciation event. I had a significant amount of volunteers and people that we served in Brentwood, but certainly not seventy-five percent, because we served most of the county. So that one, that doesn't make sense to me, and I was hoping you could clarify.
Yes, so I'm looking at this on page 875 right here, so. We try to meet those requirements, but there has to be sometimes staff discretion in trying to interpret the ask. So there has been some discretion that's taken place with these policies with this, so. But we try to use this as a guide and try to meet this policy as much as we can.
Okay, thanks. It just, I think it's unrealistic for nonprofits that are definitely serving Brentwood, but serve all the other cities in the county too, to say that they couldn't specifically have, like, an East County-focused event to serve the people in East County hosted in Brentwood, as long as they met other criteria. So, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion for, to give staff direction on looking into the city beginning to host events of Juneteenth and Veterans Day, with staff coming back with ideas, what they would do, budgets, bandwidth, partnerships with other outside vendors, and anything that will help us accomplish having these events in the future beyond 2023, not this year.
Okay, we have a first?
Oh, second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is unanimous. Moving into item D2, future agenda item request from Vice Mayor Meyer, discussion of, and possible direction to staff related to community day of service event. And turn it to Chief Herbert.
All right. I don't have a fancy PowerPoint for you, but, so this was brought up by Councilmember Meyer on November 9th and 2021, and December 1st of 2021, to look into a community day of service. She had brought up reaching out to cities like Walnut Creek. So my staff reached out to Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill, and Folsom, looking for exactly what they do so that we could replicate it. Their events are extremely large, have been around for years, are driven by, Walnut Creek was driven by the mayor, but a nonprofit runs it. They seek applications from nonprofits within the community to ask for the assistance of the community on this day of the event. When the applications are approved, they amass on a particular day in the park, they have breakfast for them, and then fan out to their different events. And the events range from people who are ambulatory to people who aren't, from food drives to painting buildings to spreading bark at schools to blood drives. It's a plethora of events that they do. All three of the cities mentioned are very similar in nature to that. So we reached out to the, let me make sure I get this right, to the Brentwood Leadership Roundtable and asked Amy Tilly if she could reach out to the nonprofits that she works with to see if this is something they'd be interesting in heading up, and we would be able to assist them with, on the city side, with the Park and Rec staff to us help on the particular day, or law enforcement if they needed road closures. on the, the particular day, or law enforcement if they needed road closures. She sent out a survey to those groups, those groups are interested in assisting with this, um, to a degree that, um, she was looking at sometime in early April of next year for this, um, because there is not a lot of time in the year left to plan an event, a large event. Staff's recommendation related to this is that if we do, if council does want to do an event this year, we do a smaller scale event, something on possibly in October that would have a blood drive, a food drive, and possibly picking up trash at Marsh Creek as we partnered with Rotary and Seroptimus last year, um, to start small and then grow. Uh, council can also choose to put it off until twenty twenty-four, that's also an option, hint, hint. And, uh, and then, uh, as far as fiscal impacts and all that, we don't know what it would be because we don't know how much staff time would be needed, uh, depending on the size of the event. I didn't know, Councilmember Meyer, you'd mentioned that you had spoken with Amy Tilly, um, with some ideas that she has, um, put out. That's my report, so I'll turn it over to council. Any questions?
Are there any questions with the chief, uh, regarding this item? Okay, seeing no questions, at this time we'll open public comments.
I have one speaker card in person. I'll call on Rod Flohr.
Yes, thank you, uh, once again for the opportunity, hopefully for the last time this year. As I was, oh, I do want to say that, um, a day of service event is great. Uh, I feel strongly about my own service to the city. I know you all feel the same. And I think that we should take that service seriously and, uh, conduct ourselves in such a way that we do in, with that. Continuing where I was, uh, Mr. Orlmans stated he was not concerned about C twelve, so we know that C fourteen, the sound wall, was what, so important for him to be able to oppose, that he would totally lose his composure when he just thought he wasn't able to do it. So I, I was going at this point to recommend that he recuse from the sound wall, but that's moot now. So, um, you know, the motion reconsider passed with support of the mayor, which surprised us at the time because he had, he earlier voted to pass the item with a consent calendar. But we later learned, or I later learned, that Orlmans was armed with a firearm. And, um, given that, I really want to apologize to the mayor because I judged you harshly that night, and I realize now that what you did was, uh, maintain order and keep us all safe, and we owe you a debt of gratitude for that. Uh, tonight, I'm calling on the city council to censure Councilmember Orlmans for his outrageous behavior and ask him to voluntarily refrain from carrying a firearm into any public meeting, and especially after the display tonight where he showed hostility towards me. And I know he's armed, and it's not easy to stand here in front of a man with a gun and have to say these things. I know the mayor is a good man, and I think he might possibly be inclined because of how he is to forgive a transgression. But the mayor is also the mayor of Brentwood and must protect the office for the benefit of the citizens of the city, not thinking only of yourself, but think of the office that you represent. You are the mayor. You are our duly rec, our duly elected mayor. You represent democracy, stability, and peace, which is the found, the foundation of our civilization and, and our way of life in America. The business of this council is of vital importance to this city, and we saw that tonight. Council members must feel safe to say what needs to be said, even when there are strong disagreements, without fear of reprisal or frankly, of being shot. This needs to be dealt with. Orlmans should resign, but I don't expect he will understand why. Orlmans, so this council must censure him and make clear he is no longer welcome to carry a firearm in these proceedings. Further, Orlmans should be referred back to the state for reevaluation of his concealed carry permit. We hear so often, if you see something, say something. If a person may be a threat, refer them for evaluation before they harm anyone. We must by law allow guns in here, and we, the state has a law that says no guns in public meetings, but unfortunately, there is an exception for concealed carry. So it, it must allow, we must by law allow guns. Uh, vigilance is our only, is our only defense against gun violence. If after today, Orlmans should happen to shoot somebody in this building, that guilt would lie heavy on this county, city council if no action was taken that could have prevented that tragedy. I do hope not to have to come back. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person. I have two hands raised in zoom. I'll call on Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Um, good evening, city council. Um, I wanted to say that I strongly support a day of service, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't have to start out huge. Um, it could start out with, with what was laid out earlier and can grow from there each subsequent year. I would suggest looking at what the needs are in our community before we decide what that service should look like. Um, there are so many opportunities for service in Brentwood, um, that it would be really great if, if we could reach out to, for example, schools. Schools are always looking for parents to volunteer, and it's, it's hard to get people because they may not know what the opportunities are. The library could use some help. Um, there's organizations in our city, um, the Lions Club that packs the food for, uh, Hijas del Campo, that take the food out to the campesinos who are picking our crops. They could use some help. So I, I think it would be important, uh, when we do a day of service, to really focus into Brentwood, what do we need here? And that, those were my thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have one additional hand raised. I'll call on Danny Doorman. Mr. Doorman, go ahead.
Sorry about that. It took me a minute to find the button. Yes, I, I think a day of service is great. It, hopefully will bring the community together, um, and that is what we need. And as I'm sitting here listening to Councilwoman Pearson's ask of a veteran parade in a Juneteenth event, my mind kept going around and around about how money should be spent to consider all of Brentwood.
Mr. Doorman, if you're still speaking, we can't hear you. There's no additional hands raised, just Mr. Doorman, and his mic is still activated, but I can't hear if he's speaking.
We'll just let his time continue until, uh, if he's having technical difficulties, he can potentially during that time speak.
His hands also no longer raised and his mic is no longer activated.
At this time, then, we will thank Mr. Doorman for his comments and close public comment. Move into council discussion.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, when I, I first suggested this, I actually had in mind that we would work with the BNC as the host and planning, um, entity of this event. Of course, the BNC has not met in a long time and is pretty much not even in existence anymore. So the leadership roundtable was a suggestion, um, a secondary idea that actually was a pretty good one. So I've been talking with Amy about it for quite a while. We settled on April of twenty twenty-four because April is National Volunteer Month, and it felt like a really good fit. We also mentioned not only one-day jobs, but takeaway. For example, um, Girl Scouts could come and, and, um, pick up addresses where they could go home and write and create cards and then send them to people living in six-bed facilities, that kind of thing. So there was, uh, the, the projects were going to be based on the people living within the city of Brentwood that the nonprofits were serving and what those established needs were. Um, I, I'm aware, for example, that Meals on Wheels was talking about helping, um, people who are homebound with some landscaping and light repairs, like light bulb changes, that kind of thing for the day. So there's a, a wide variety of opportunities here. I worked with Amy on the survey, which went out, and we did some extra outreach on that. Uh, I, Michelle from Better in Brentwood reached out, so at this point now, we've also got a dedicated page on the Better in Brentwood page that is a place for nonprofits to list opportunities for volunteers. So it's kind of, it's more merging into that as well. I'm tired. So I think, I, I think it's a really good thing to do. I, at this point, the, the biggest cost is potentially the staff time, so we definitely need to look at what that would be. And again, you know, going back to capacity. But I, I also don't think we need to do anything this year. I think, um, at, at our, our seventy-fifth anniversary events, I think we could promote it as happening in April. There is not a specific date that it has to be, because April, the whole month is volunteer month, so it could be based on weather, it could be based on what the projects are. Some of them are outdoors, some of them are indoors, that kind of thing. So, um, I do think that there, it's a great way to bring the community together. It's a great way to introduce local nonprofits to people who might need that resource, or to, again, people who want to find nonprofits to work with and volunteer for, and Tim's catching a bug of some sort, I think. So, yeah, I think there's a, there's a, a lot of potential here for really some, some good PR for the city, some great way to bring residents and, and, um, people in need and volunteers and nonprofits all together on the same page to work for the betterment, Better, Better in Brentwood as a site is a great, I think, host site for it. I think it would also be great to mention in the newsletter, in the Parks and Rec Activity Guide, if possible. Again, things can develop as it goes, but the initial ideas are pretty broad, um, to make it fit within capacity. When I've been a part of this in other cities, um, on the, on the other end of it, people would sometimes donate supplies for, like, creating business or, uh, greeting cards or placemats or, you know, things like little craft projects, that people would just submit things and then turn it into a project for someone else. So I think there's a lot, um, that can be done that's a pretty broad range of impact. So.
I think I brought something up at our earlier, earlier in the year, um, about the school district, so I appreciate the comment of Carolina Villaseca. I sit on Adams Middle School Parent Club, and I know specifically at Adams Middle School, they give students who complete fifteen hours of, um, volunteer service, recognition, credits, not credits, but recognition. It's a pretty big deal. And what came up from a lot of our parents in that area who have students there was that they don't have enough activities and they like to do some partnering with, um, the city. And just even if the students, just as a parent myself, uh, trying to find activities locally, so I don't have to do things like drive my kid all the way to Glide Memorial Church, or we've been dragging them out in the community, putting backpacks together, aligning with other organizations to give backpacks to the homeless. It would be nice if we did have something during a specific time of the year and then throughout the year, um, to provide for our youth. I think it would be great for, um, just, you know, some of that downtime that they have after school that we talk about, trying to fill gaps in, to provide those activities. But I would actually suggest that it not just happen in April on a designated time, but there, if there's a, um, a running type of thing that if people want to come and get a list of organizations that we can support, that it's an ongoing community supportive activities, um, in addition to, so like, if we as a city have a suggestion of organizations that look, look for people to volunteer in conjunction with the Community Day of Service. So I absolutely think that this is a phenomenal idea and think, I agree with Ms. Villaseca, that it would be really good if we can partner up with our school districts as well, so that parents have an idea. And there are a whole bunch of leadership, um, groups at our schools that I know would love to probably come out and support some, a Community Day of Service.
And I think the, um, the portal I was talking about for nonprofits to post volunteer activities, it's in its very beginning stages, but that's exactly what the purpose would be, so that people have a central place to go to, to always find out what kind of opportunities there are to support nonprofits. And I, and I have seen definitely school groups and Girl Scouts and NCL and Boy Scouts and, like, getting involved in a, in a day-long project through this that then in turn turns into something else.
Yeah, I think, um, I think it's a great idea. I know a lot of other cities do it, and I just did bring up the Better in Brentwood page, so I see that there. I think that's, um, maybe you can take that Better in Brentwood page to the schools, because I think that's where they could find some volunteer activities. Also, um, the library is a good option for them, and I know this is off topic, but they just posted that they need teens and kids for reading, like, people like, to help them get through reading. So, um, there's definitely plenty of, um, volunteer opportunities out there if you look. But I think, yeah, I think this webpage is a good place to put it. And then keep this focused to, like, the one time that you want to do something really good, and then this is the ongoing avenue for it, so that you don't muddy up, you know, the, like, you want that to be kind of a special day, like, like, it's become something really, really big in Walnut Creek that people take a lot of pride in, because it's one day. So, um, yeah, I mean, twenty twenty-four, I think this year's, like, would be really tight. And I would not do it the first week of March, because that's Easter's the thirty-first, and people are, and not the public, not the Brentwood schools, but the Christian schools, like, we used to be out that week after, so my girls were never around during Easter week. So, I mean, that would be my only thing, is just work around that schedule. You don't want people to be out of town, um, when we do it.
Good points. And I think, um, the library is a very good point, because they could easily post something on that site now as well. So I know that, um, Amy's reached out, I've reached out to a bunch of nonprofits, um, and collectives to, to invite people to take part in that, but I think it would be a good thing to add to the newsletter as well. If you're a local nonprofit or service group that's looking for some support from volunteers, here's a place to submit your information.
Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, do we have a motion?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to provide the following direction. I'm just going to read it right out there. Um, I move to, um, look at potentially Parks and Rec being supportive of this process so that it's not on the PD. We talked about that. You're welcome. Um, that the, uh, leadership roundtable be in support of this, that the newsletter mention the Better in Brentwood Volunteer Ongoing Opportunities page, that we do some promotion of that, that we, uh, if, if we can develop this into something solid, that we would promote it during our seventy-fifth anniversary outreach and any other kind of outreach, outreach, we're, God, I'm so tired, I'm sorry. Any other outreach we're doing this year in advance of next April, so that we can start to boost some interest from nonprofits and community members and potential volunteers? Um, any questions on any of this that I'm missing?
Did you want to include the ongoing?
I think the ongoing needs to be its own, I mean, it, it, I can mention it separately, but I do think we need to make sure people are aware of that opportunity and, like, for example, the library could be listing opportunities there, and we can put that in our newsletter to talk about local nonprofits if you need volunteers. Here's a place to post. East County is historically very, very hard to find volunteers in, so I think it's a great thing that we can offer that. Is that clear? Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Move into item E one, uh, requests for. Move into item E1, requests for new future agenda items. Is there anyone that has a new future agenda item?
We need to talk about censuring Councilmember Tony Orlemans. I wasn't sure about it, but then after public comment today, I think we need to have a bigger discussion about what we're going to do about it.
Okay, are there any further new agenda item requests?
I was just going to say, as far as the censure, I would be willing to be a second on that if we can look at sanction.
Just before this comes back, so we do have a city policy on this. So we can follow up with the maker of the motion offline.
We're going to talk about censuring Councilmember Tony Orlemans.
I understand. So to the extent that you have a policy that addresses how that goes, I don't know if you want to have a look at that. I'm happy to talk offline about that.
I thought we could come directly here if there was two people. So I've talked, I've talked to Susanna, so sorry Vice Mayor Meyer. Yeah, I mean, you can tell me what the policy is and I'll go through that way or this way, whatever works for you.
If you would like to have a private conversation about the policy, I'm happy to do that. If you want to put the policy up on the board so everybody can see it, we can do that.
We can do that. The best way to go about it, that's fine. I mean, I think change would not, I thought when we changed it, we changed it.
I think we changed if you didn't talk to the mayor, which was the policy said before, you could talk to a separate council member and then just to bring the accusation to me. So, but since it's been a public issue, we can make it, we will just make it work. We'll try to fit it within the policy and take care of it from there.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no new future agenda items in addition, we will move into item E2.1. Councilmember Pearson would like to explain her request.
Yes, at our last meeting, we did, we received an informational report from Moore Recreation Therapy Consulting Inc. regarding the Adaptive and Inclusive Recreation Assessment Study. During that time, I had made a request that we bring this back to discuss as a future agenda item, that we give staff the opportunity to, to give them direction and time to, one, create a list of urgency of things recommended in the adaptive report that need to be done, a timeline of their urgency. Two, a cost of all the projects they gave, I think we get, we received some of the contracts, but I think if we look at it holistically, there is a much larger number that can be produced from the recommendations. And I would add that that list come from the urgency. And then three, the ways we can in the interim, because I think we talked about this may come back in a different form when we look at strategic planning at the end of the year, possibly next year. There's still needs that are met until then. So I think that Ten had brought up ways that we can in the interim mitigate, like the supplies that were a little bit more reduced. I think there were like little supplies we can get this cheaper. I'd like a report out on those mitigating factors. I think there were other suggestions that I made about third-party vendors who cater to differently-able children. If we can try to start looking at those for next year's summer programming, not this year's. I think this year's pretty solidified. And then also there was a suggestion from Carolina Villaseca about what efforts we're making or potential partnerships with the school and the educational staff, especially during the summer months when staff is not working. So that was my ask, and so I opened it up for discussion.
Okay, before we get to that, I will open public comments, Margaret.
If you're in person, please pull out a speaker card. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. I have one hand raised, I have no speaker cards in the chambers. I'll call on Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Thank you. And I apologize for being disconnected early. That was on my side, it was not on the city's side. But thank you, Hovita and Susanna, for doing the right thing. There really isn't much more I can say about it. It's just amazing that the closest Tony even came to speaking about his actions was a paragraph that he decided not to read. He, I don't know, maybe he comes from the Trump school of never apologize no matter how wrong you did something. I honestly don't know. I mean, I played the recording of his actions. That should have pretty much, if he didn't know, that should have pretty much covered it. So I'm glad these actions are taking place. There was possible talk earlier in the year about another council person that I'm glad didn't go through because I didn't think it had merit as much as I just can't stand this councilwoman. I didn't think it had enough merit. This, on the other hand, is a whole different animal. And if anything, the future agenda item should include his actions, the three Brown Act violations, is going in the anteroom with the mayor and with Councilwoman Pearson. The second act of the Brown Act violation was when Joel and Tony and Susanna was in earshot. And it looked like they were speaking loud enough for Susanna to hear in. And I am sorry, Madam Vice Mayor, if you did hear any of it and you were the third person in the Brown Act violation. I think the letter I sent to you and sent to the city manager and the city attorney is very clear. I think that my points are valid and provable, therefore enforceable. And as I said, I really don't want to take action with this district attorney. I really don't. But if you can't keep the kids in line, boy, well then I guess daddy's going to have to come in and spank some butts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brayden Hayna. Brayden, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have to come back on real quick. I came towards the end, didn't really hear the beginning of it. But I would just like to say, let's, let's take a pause for a moment here. Let's put the shoe on the other foot. If it was another council member up there that Danny agrees with that had the same outburst that Councilman Orlemans did, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It'd be okay. That's the double standard we have on the council here. And that's why in my comment earlier, talking about the little, the little minions in this game, I don't even know what game it's going on, but if the shoe was on the other foot, if it was Councilwoman Mendoza that would have had that outburst, it would have been totally fine. Tony was trying to just get transparency. There was an issue with the agenda at that last meeting and obviously he had every right to be upset. Now, did he need to storm out? Well, that's, that's a different conversation. I, for one, am happy that Tony showed emotion and stood up for the residents of Brentwood and shone, shone a light on what was going on with that situation. But I'm just saying, if the shoe was on the other foot and it was Hovita that did this, we would not be sitting here talking about it and it would be perfectly fine. It would be perfectly fine and that's the double standard I'm talking about. And that's the problem that, that everybody is tired of. And that's why I spoke up earlier because people are reaching out to me. I'm not even on the freaking council, I didn't even win the election. People are reaching out to me, telling me to come here and talk because everybody else is too scared to. I'm not scared and, and I've got nothing to lose. I'm speaking for the quiet people that, that don't want their name out there and don't want to be slandered on the internet, on the Brentwood Alliance Facebook page with all the drama. I mean, you guys are over 50 years old or whatever. You'd think that you would have left that in high school. Clearly not. You guys just need to grow up and, and stop with the picking on who you don't agree with. That's all I got.
I have no additional hands raised and no additional speaker cards.
At this time, we will close public comment, move into council discussion on this item.
This, when we talked about this last time, it reminded me a lot of the work that was being done towards the open space conservation part of the general plan. And when we, I introduced that as an item as well and brought it up as something like, what can we do now, low-hanging fruit? You know, work on our priorities and figure out what the lower-cost items were that were a little bit easier to attain in the short term. So the same, same kind of thing to me. And I actually had it, I had it on my notes last time to actually bring it up as an agenda item. And I didn't because staff was talking about doing the same thing. I'm okay with, with moving forward to this. I mean, I've been wanting this for a long time, so I'm okay with moving forward with it. But I do want to be clear that I think it's, we just have to be cautious about what happens now versus what happens in the future. And when I brought it up, I knew very well that I wasn't the first council member that brought it up. It was brought up years before and it's, it's an ongoing conversation. And I think there's some good things happening. I mean, the study happened, so we know where we need to be. But I would like to see the analytics looking at, again, the low-hanging fruit, the short-term versus the long-term, very similar to what we're doing for the, the action plans for the conservation of open space. I did want to mention, I still feel like a large part of this is adults with disabilities. There are fewer programs available to that population. I was happy to see that the library recently added, expanded their programming for that, for that group. So they've seen that need as well, which is fantastic. And I also want to reiterate what I said last time about, I think if we are going to partner with a nonprofit working in this arena, that we should be working with Working Wonders and not necessarily be exceptional, which was mentioned in the packet because Working Wonders is already doing this work specifically in Brentwood, their Brentwood nonprofit. So I think that's something that we should make note of. There was a lot of things, I brought my notes from last time. There was a lot of things that were fairly easy to get started. Some of them, Councilmember Pearson mentioned, as far as some of the tools, scissors, that kind of thing. Some of these trainings that were brought up, I think were really important. I think, I'm looking at my notes, I think I'm covered what I was going to say, but I do want to, I do want to make sure that we're really looking at the analytics of this. We're looking at short-term versus long-term, the money, the low-hanging fruit. I'm saying that over again. I loved the idea of the closed captioning for Movies in the Park. I think that was a fairly easy one to implement, short-term. But I do think this is something that we need to look at again. We're making progress. I know it's kind of slow, there's costs associated with a lot of this, but we are making progress. So I'm very happy about that. Thank you.
I think you guys already do an awesome job at trying to address everything you can, like I said last time. So you do it when you can and I trust that you do because I see what you all do and I hear what you do. So yeah, I think whatever, bring back the list. And I don't know if that's now or that's September because I know, I feel bad because I know you guys are really slammed right now. You know, head count, new people, you know, ramping up. And like I look at you because I know you're ramping up. So I, I'm, I'm happy with it, but I don't want you to feel like, again, like we want you here like eight, you know, we don't need you here late, like your job is 40 hours a week. And I said that a couple of years ago and I, I mean it. Like your work-life balance is the most important thing. So I, I think that when the motion is made, let's take that into consideration because they are probably one of the most taxed departments that I think we have right now in the city. And I do love the bathrooms, by the way. I hear about them every single day.
Just to be clear, when I brought this last week, I actually said for us not to bring it back for a while. And this portion was brought back just for us to see when we can put it on for a future item. I know that this, the, the ask is asking for a lot and to have it back next week would, to me, be impossible. Even though I know you guys wear capes when you leave here during your, you know, time when you get in, I don't think that we should put that requirement on you to come back next week, which is what I said last week. So my ask, is, are there any? Can I, are you opening? I'd like to make a motion. Let me make sure I'm following the red agenda. Well, there's not one on here. I'd like to make a motion that we, yeah, let me look at what I wrote specifically. Spend staff time to produce a list of the urgency of things recommended that need to be done in connection with the, the adaptive and inclusion recreation study, that the cost, that would be inclusive of cost and the ways that we can in the interim mitigate some of the ideas that were presented to be considered as well as other ideas. I would also ask in this motion that this not, that we give time, staff time. So I'd ask that it come back in August or September. And actually, is that enough time? I think it'd be best if I asked you all, because I will bid my motion, is August or September okay? Or do you feel like you need a little bit more time?
I think that timing is fine because we're basically bringing back what we can do now versus the future. So in that, when we bring it back, we'll let you know if there's things that are just more long-term. But we can let you know kind of a shorter-term thing, so.
Thank you.
I think that's feasible.
Then I'll second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. We will move into the final motion. I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
A first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.